Good evening, everybody. It's good to see a packed house. We've got some really great people in here and looking forward to a really good meeting. At 4:36, I'm going to go ahead and call our regular meeting of the Board of Trustees to order, December 13th, 2018. At this point, I'm going to call us to order. So, right, moving on to our general election of November 6th results. We're going to do our acceptance of statement of votes, the cast and certification of our election from the Napa County.
Point of order.
We need to do roll call.
That's good. Yeah.
First one, alright. So, roll call, please.
Trustee Baker.
Here.
Trustee Dodd.
Here.
Trustee Goff.
Here.
Trustee Baldini.
Here.
Trustee Segura.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
And student trustee Kawaja.
Here.
And trustee Iverson.
Here.
Thank you. All present.
Okay, so at this point, Board Secretary Dr. Ronald Kraft will take this item. John Tudor, register of voters for Napa County submitted the statement of votes cast and the certification of election from the Napa County, November 6th, 2018, general election for trustee area 2, trustee area 3, trustee area 4, and trustee area 5 for board action. Do I have a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Been properly motioned and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 To Dr. Kraft.
Okay, that was good. That's duly accepted and noted, and thank you so much.
Trustee Iverson, could you please list the motion? Who moved, who seconded?
So, Josefa, the motion, and Rosara seconded.
Yeah.
Thank you.
At this point, we're going to move to 3.2, and we're going to be doing the swearing in of our trustees.
We will start. This is the fun part, which you're all here for, so I'm excited about that. So, I am going to ask Superintendent Barbara Nimko, who is out there, to join with me in swearing in Beth Goff, right? So, she wanted to be part of this. So, we're going to go over there to the podium and do it over there. So, you're going to stand there, and I'm going to stand next to you.
Okay. Okay.
If you would please raise your right hand. I, Elizabeth Goff.
I, Elizabeth Goff.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties for which I am about to enter. Congratulations. Why not? One more.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, and we are done now. I'm going to call Jeff to come on over. I am not as, you memorize that. I'm so impressed. I am going to read this as Jeff comes over. Hey, that's good.
Short phrases.
Yes, yes. Raise your right hand, please. I, in your name, please.
I, Jeff Dodd.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Into which I'm about to enter.
Into which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, one more. My mom.
Photo.
Photo.
Now, I would like to call Michael Baldini, so we can reaffirm. One side, this side. We'll do it the same way.
Alright.
Okay. Raise your right hand. You've been through this a while.
Yes.
I, in your name, please.
I, Michael J. Baldini.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Into which I'm about to enter.
To which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And Kyle Iverson, please. You should know this by heart now, right? Raise your right hand, please. I, in state unit, please.
I, William Kyle Iverson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Into which I'm about to enter.
Into which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, that was nice. Thank you, everybody. Right now, we're going to move to section 4.1, acknowledgement of items. We're going to, I would like to take this opportunity to thank our outgoing trustees, Mary Ann Mancuso, who served for five years, and Amy Martenson, who served for four years, for their public service. Every year, the Board recognizes the service of outgoing chair. For 2018, we'd like to recognize Mary Ann Mancuso for her service as Board Chair. As is our custom, we are pleased to present this gavel and resolution.
I do, and you can bring her up and present the gavel while we read this resolution.
Mary Ann, would you like to come up? So, in honor of Mary Ann Mancuso, whereas Mary Ann Mancuso served as President of the Board of Trustees and has many times provided leadership and insight to committees and appointments of the Board, and whereas her acute sensitivity to what is proper and appropriate in dealing with others served the College and the Board of Trustees well during a difficult year, and her professional and passionate demeanor fostered inclusivity for all college constituent groups and Napa Valley community members, and whereas Mary Ann always appreciated and recognized the work and concerns of others, identified points of pride, and inspired students and colleagues to reach for their goals, and whereas she is a close member of the campus family, not the least through her participation in amazing number of campus activities, ceremonies, events, and projects, and whereas her enthusiasm for being a champion of the college is legendary. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees, on behalf of the college and community, thank Mary Ann Mancuso for her service as trustee and Board President Chair, passed and adopted by the Governing Board of the Napa Valley Community College District and Napa County, California, this 13th day of December, 2018. Thank you.
I don't know about legendary. That was a pretty strong word. So, just a few words. I want to say how honored, first of all, that I have been to serve on this Board for five years, and to the new Board members, I hope you know what you're getting into. This college is the best of the best. The people who are here are the best of the best. You are surrounded by people who are not just doing an incredible job locally, but are known around this state for their great work. Eric Sheer has been a role model in dual enrollment, the rollout of AB 705, and so many other things that he's walked in with such enthusiasm, and it's been a real privilege to work with him. Excuse me. Oscar Daharo, I have just been so pleased to know you and so pleased to work with you. You are a man of such great passion and honor. Kristy Wamoto, your enthusiasm is just infectious. I love, love being with you, and it's been a great honor to work with you. Charo and Bob, our administrators, are just so amazing, and Amanda, you're just so incredibly ridiculously smart. And I have learned so, so much from you, and I hope that you will have the same talk with this group as you had with us early on in teaching us more about shared governance. Thank you so much for that great start. But, you know, I have seen so much since I've been here, and I, mostly what I've seen is people who love and care so much about what they do, so much that our recognized, nationally-recognized psychiatric technicians, respiratory therapy programs, you know, one of our program directors at every penning breaks out into tears. And most of you probably know who that is. But, that's what you see here. You see people so full of love and so full of passion that it comes out every day in every single thing that they do, and it's just been an honor to be a part of it. And, you know, democracy is something we love. Sometimes it always doesn't turn out the way that you wanted it to, but we do love our democracy, and I was reminded in watching the finale of Dancing with the Stars that sometimes the best dancer doesn't always get the most votes. And as most of you know, that can go both ways with me, so, thank you so much. Ron, you're an amazing leader, and working with you side by side in this last year that I've been Chair has been incredible. Thank you.
Excuse me, Board Chair.
Actually, Josefa, I'd like to ask for a motion on the floor to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any abstentions, opposed? All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. At this point, Amy, do you have any parting words, or would you like to say anything? I'd like to... Thank you.
I did my letter at the end, I'll play everybody's thoughts.
Thank you. Alright, so, moving on to section 4.
Excuse me, Board Chair, sorry. Before we move forward, there's a few words I would like to say in a token of appreciation. There's something I wrote down. It's for Mary Ann Mancuso and Amy Martenson, for both the leaving trustees. Here it is. "It's really hard to say goodbye, but it's time for you to fly. You're off to see pastures new, and so we affront ado. But I'll not forget the time we had. Working together was such a blast, and fond memories you'll take home. A part of me wishes you could stay. I wish you the best for your future. Trust, this is part of one grand scheme plan." And a token of appreciation for me and my brother Hamzak Amrun to Mary Ann Mancuso.
That's next.
This is for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Josefa. Thank you, guys. So, moving on to 4.2, acknowledgement of classified and administrative retirees. It is our custom to recognize retiring classified and administrative employees. Those within their 15 years of service receive a certificate, and those with over 15 years are honored with the resolution. Dr. Kraft will read the certificate for Sue, hoping that you're out in attendance here.
I don't think Sue, yes, is not here tonight, so I'll just read it. "In recognition of her retirement, classified professional Sue McNerney Simic has served as an important and valued part of the educational team at Napa Valley College for over 10 years. She contributed greatly to the college's shared goal to provide access to outstanding educational programs and services, awarded this 13th day of December, 2018. My congratulations and ours."
We will also be honoring Vicki Tharp's colleagues. Presented her with a recognition signed by Dr. Kraft in May of 2018, which will be read by Dr. Kraft.
And Vicki is here, I think, right? Yes. I'll meet you over there. Yeah. So, this is in recognition. Whereas Vicki Tharp has served Napa Valley College for more than 31 years, and an instructional assistant in the Writing Center, helping thousands of students become better writers, and whereas she has done this with kindness, patience, and a clear understanding of the innermost workings of the English language. And she also did ESL placement testing, served as an adjunct ESL instructor in both credit and community education classes, ran the Tutorial Options Program at Calistoga High School, and has used her creative talents to enrich the Writing Center's environment, making original decorations to mark the seasons, and did you ever, right? Designing our spotlight on staff board, elegantly arranging the tables, and overall setup at our open houses and poetry readings, doing many other things which make the Center a pleasant place to be. She was selected as an NVC Classified Employee of the Month and has been a delight to work with, being ever reliable, willing to help, possessed of a marvelous sense of humor. You have to tell a joke when we're ready. She will be missed more than we can say, and it's my honor to again present this to you tonight. Okay, congratulations.
This is really the fun part. And administrative confidential staff, Chief Ken Arnold, or former Chief Ken Arnold, now going into retirement, Director of the College Police for 38.8 years of service. Is Ken in here?
Oh, yeah. Can you meet him over?
Oh, yes.
Mm-hmm.
It's Bob's side, I agree.
Mm-hmm.
In honor of Kenneth Arnold, whereas Ken Arnold, Director of College Police, has served Napa Valley College for over 38 years with unwavering dedication to staff and students, and has filled many roles, including Director of the Leadership Academy, President of the Administrative Confidential Senate, Chair of the SAVE, S-A-V-E, Task Force, and Emergency Response Committee, and has been a valued contributor to the Safety Committee, Facilities Committee, and BERT Bias Incident Response Team, and whereas Ken has made a significant positive impact through his work as a leader and mentor for students and staff in support with his canine comfort dog, Aaron, and whereas Ken has many accomplishments and many firsts, including being on the forefront of campus safety, crime prevention, and threat assessment, and whereas many employees will remember Ken for his barbecue cooking skills and the delicious baked goods he shared at numerous trainings, and wonderful stories about his family and private life, prior life lessons. Whereas, Ken has had a positive impact on the college community, both through and beyond his role as chief, because of his insight, clarity of purpose, and pervading value to do what is right, not what is easy, and constant effort to create a campus with a safe environment. Therefore, be it resolved that the entire college community extends admiration and appreciation to Ken Arnold and wishes him the best as he embarks on his retirement, including going on more camping trips, flying airplanes, and helping out with the Napa County CERT program. We further wish him safe travels to new destinations and many, many years of continued good health, good friends, and good fortune, passed and adopted by the Governing Board of the Napa Valley Community College District and Napa County, California, this 13th day of December, 2018. Thank you.
I'm not sure who that was about. I appreciate the kind words. I, it was, I want to just say a couple of quick thank yous. Dr. Kraft, thank you very much. It has been a pleasure working with you, finding that kindred spirit and allowing me to take off and run leadership. I've worked for a number of Presidents, some good, some excellent, some good, some not so good, but it still is remarkable that the college were a great place. This is an incredible institution that really does change people's lives, and we should all remember that. And it's not just the Presidents, it's the faculty and all of the folks, too. Working for Oscar, thank you for everything. You have been an incredible boss who has allowed me to really do a lot of, a lot of great things. I leave the district not in bad hands. The next chief is here, and on Saturday, we're going to be promoting Amber Wade, and to the next chief, she'll be the third police chief for the college. That's pretty rare to have that in today's world, to have three. This is only your third one. This is your third chief as a college, and that's pretty remarkable, given the environment that we work in today. And she will do an incredible job for you. I have an incredible staff, and Hoyt Maddox, who is our Sergeant, who is the foundation for which, you know, that department was built on, and I just look better than he does. So, we always talk about where we look alike. I'm just, I still look younger than him. Just saying. And so, but there is. It's, the college is a remarkable place, and thank you for the opportunity to look out for your safety. I have to say that for the first time, I joined the Army when I was 17 years old and swore to protect people, and now, in my late 50s, for the first time, I will be a citizen. I relish the thought, but I will not be a, I will not be a sheepdog for the first time in my entire adult life. You know, it'll be good. I will miss the college, but I'm going to jump right into emergency training and training people about how to disaster resilience, because it's something we need to do, and, you know, I can't just sit still with that one. But, thank you so much for the kind and gracious words.
Thank you, Ken. Moving on to 4.3.
Point of order.
Four.
We need a motion on that resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any objections, or? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. 4.3, emeritus status, administrative confidential, item added by addendum. Robert Harris, President of the Administrative Confidential Senate, and President Dr. Kraft recommend that the Board of Trustees grant emeritus status to retiring member Ken Arnold, and that he be granted all the privileges and rights outlined in Board Policy 3101. Emeritus status, academic, classified, and administrative staff. Emeritus status is an honorary title awarded to recognize the distinguished and honorable services of retirees and to encourage continued association with the college. Emeritus status may be granted to qualified academic, classified, and administrative staff upon retirement or other separation from the district. Do I have a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Catherine, do you have?
Yes. You do get a parting pass, so this is a good thing for you, alright?
Thank you. So, procedural, we're going to take a recess in Board Reception, and so, we're a little over, but I also wanted to, is Betty Rhodes still in the audience?
She did.
I wanted to sing happy birthday for her, wish her a happy birthday. So, alright, well, we're going to move to recess. The Board is now in recess. He wants to, he's doing it. Guys can bring your cake up if you want, obviously. So, we're now back in public session, and I wanted to give a few minutes for our new trustees to say a few words. Trustee Dodd, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Chair. For the remaining, I did want to give, one, just tell everyone how grateful and thankful I am to be here. It's tremendous responsibility and very thankful to be here. I did want to give a shout out and a huge, particular thank you to my family. Half of them were, which was half of this room about 10 minutes ago. Just a tremendous support through this entire time, in particular, my grandma, who is my campaign counselor on senior issues. It was her birthday today, and so unfortunately, she wasn't, but it was great to have her here, and we had a wonderful lunch for her birthday today. My dad, Bill, is there. My mom left with my grandmother earlier. My mother-in-law, Julie Johnson. My father-in-law, John Ingelskberger. And then, who other family members are here? My lovely, lovely sister, Georgia. My lovely stepmother, Mary, and my number-one campaign fan and supporter, my wife, Kelly Dodd, who did this the whole time while pregnant. She's 31 weeks pregnant, 31 months, excuse me, pregnant, and... She better be.
Weeks, yes.
Oh, don't get me into trouble. Don't get me in trouble. Excuse me. 31 weeks pregnant, thank you. I love you so much, and thank you for everything, Kelly. I love you so much, and thank you for everything, Kelly.
I do want to reiterate how happy I am to be here. My supporters actually left, because they have to fight the traffic to American Canyon, so they all grabbed, jumped into their cars, there's a couple of vents going down there that they wanted to get to, but I am just really, really proud to represent American Canyon, we're the second-largest city in Napa County, and I'm really excited about the prospect of really getting Napa Valley College in American Canyon, so then, our students have access to everything that is wonderful about this institution. So, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you, guys. This is your new College Board of Trustees for Napa College, so thank you, everyone, for coming, and right now, we're going to, we're going to public comment on closed-session items, so at this time, the board will devote a total of 15 minutes for comments to the Board of Trustees regarding closed-session agenda items. Individuals will be limited to a five-minute presentation. I see another mass exodus, but any comment on closed-session items out there? I'm going to gavel down, and we're going to go to closed session. To discuss, conference with labor negotiations, and 6.2, public employment. Thank you.
We're good. So, we can leave everything here? Okay. Oh, no, I'm not...
So, we're returning back from public session, and we're going to, not, a closed session, I'm sorry. Do I have to do them? So, reporting back from closed session, we are pleased to announce the hiring of Holly Krasner-Dawson to the position of Public Information Officer. I'm also pleased to announce that it was a 7-0 vote, so no abstentions, or... So, start date is February 4, 2018.
2019, you're right, yeah. Sorry. That was my bad.
So, congratulations, Holly.
Thank you very much.
And now, I'd like to have our new trustees, I don't know if you, you guys don't have to do it in sync, but would trustee Dodd and Goff lead us in the pledge?
Yeah, that's nice.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cue.
I'm sorry, you're on the wrong page. We're good.
So, we're moving to 7.3, adoption of the agenda. We do have a request by staff to pull from the consent calendar, item 13.3, 2019 to 20 academic calendar. Do I have a motion on the floor? Trustee Baldini has made the motion, trustee Baker seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. So, adoption of the agenda, no other items to be pulled. So, the agenda is adopted. We do have...
I'm going to read that now.
So, moving on to item 8, public comment, this is general public comment. At this time, the board will devote a total of up to 15 minutes for comments to the Board of Trustees regarding any subject not appearing as an agenda item for this meeting, but over which the board has jurisdiction. The public may ask the board to place an item related to the business of the district on a future board agenda. No action or discussion will occur at this time on such items, individuals will be limited to a five-minute presentation. At this time, I'm going to pull those in attendance, and regarding their intent to speak, it looks like we've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
General, and 1 for later.
For general, and in no particular order. Speaker Jason Kishneff.
Hello, good evening. I wanted to take a minute and thank trustee Martenson for her service. I think that she's done a knock-up job sticking up for what's right, no matter what the heat against her was, and being in the minority, always there to question, always there, sticking to her principles. I think you're just wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Next, I have Eileen Tahada.
So, I am a faculty member in the English Department, and I wanted to come tonight to say thank you to the board. In 2015, you approved my going on sabbatical, and this past Monday, I defended my dissertation successfully, and I just want to say thank you, because I feel that your support was a big part of that, and so, I want to encourage you to continue supporting faculty in our professional development. I just want you to know that my students have been the greatest recipient of the information and knowledge that I've gained in my course of study. My doctorate is in anthropology and social change, and I just wanted to, as I changed my, or adapted my both epistemology and my pedagogy, this semester, I was, I've been evaluated, it was my year to be evaluated, and I just wanted to share just a couple of the student comments, as a result of some of the changes that I made in my teaching because of the doctorate. One of them says, "I strongly feel that she's one of the best English teachers there is here on campus at Napa Valley College. The reason for this is that she comes to class well-prepared, her style of teaching draws you in and makes you focus on what she's teaching, there's never a dull moment in class. Overall, she's an understandable teacher that respects her students equally. Every day, I usually learn at least one thing coming out of this class, she keeps my brain working." Let me see, a couple of others. Professor Tahada always comes prepared, ready to dig deep into the content that she teaches, she has focal points, and always knows what she's talking about. Her knowledge about all the concepts she teaches makes me excited to learn something new from her every day, especially when she teaches us about society." And I could go on, that's the tenor of it. So, I just wanted to say thank you, and again, please continue supporting faculty professional development, and especially the sabbaticals, because it really does change, and has a great impact on how we deal with our students and what we teach. So, thank you again, very much.
Eileen, thank you, and congratulations on defending your dissertation. Mr. Ruskel Kayangyang, hoping I pronounced that right.
Good evening, board members. My name is Ruskel Kayangyang. First, I want to congratulate now Dr. Tahada, she was my professor here, when I was attending here years ago. Second, I do want to take this time to thank College Board Trustee Martenson for her service. As a former school board president for the Vallejo School District, and just to clarify, I'm speaking as an individual, I appreciate trustee Martenson, and our work together on issues in the community, especially region-wide, Bay Area-wide, when it comes to helping our students. I appreciate her focus on the board, a financial responsibility to improving transparency. I'm glad we finally have these board meetings recorded on video, because I remember, when I served here on the board years ago, our meetings were, are not recorded, but we have come a long way, thanks to her leadership. I also want to thank her for her service to the students in this community, she's been a teacher here for 20 years. Many school districts and other agencies are recognizing their outgoing board members, and I don't see it on tonight's agenda, but I would urge the board to place an item on your next available agenda resolution, recognizing her years of service on the board, as well as her years of service teaching the students in our community. Having served as a school board president of a challenging school district, regardless of differences, in all fairness, we have to recognize those that serve on the board, who have put in the hours, and commitment, and the energy, because it's not an easy job, the service must be recognized. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ruskel. Mr. Alex Schantz.
Thank you, board chair. My name's Alex Schantz. I'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to share some of my thoughts on this last election. Many of you on the board treated trustee Martenson horribly during her four-year term. From day one, it was obvious that you viewed her as some kind of, an enemy. In a previous board meeting, trustee Bozenbark spoke during public comment, and explained to everyone that it was clear to her, pretty, you know, quickly, that Amy Martenson was a rogue trustee, and basically, that's how all of you treated her, as a rogue trustee. And why? Why was she a rogue trustee? Because she asked questions? Because she insisted on transparency? Because she believed shared governance is more than just a buzzword? This is what trustee Martenson was elected to do, and based upon the number of incumbents who've been defeated in past elections, it's clear that voters actually do support change, and believe in the values that Amy and others have run on. During this last election, I also believe there was, an internal campaign basically waged against Amy Martenson, specifically the ethics violation, you know, that's what they were trying to hinge in on, even though that motion was specifically amended to depersonalize the issue, they ran with the ethics violation, there was a Napa broadcasting interview that focused on that, that was posted on the college's Facebook page, they eventually took it down after I tagged the DA, but then after that, there was that email sent to all staff by Dr. Kraft, where he put Amy on blast, and in response to that, she sends a cease and desist letter, to basically try to stop the slander that was going on, and in regards to that cease and desist letter, you know, the board approved a letter on October 8. I'd basically like to ask the board to consider making a motion to rescind that letter, some of the determinations in that letter are dubious at best, and just, again, specifically, the whole point was to depersonalize the issue, and that's not what happened. Yeah, I'm just going to leave it there. I also want to thank Amy Martenson for her service as well, and, you know, good luck to the rest of the board.
Thank you, Alex. I next have Shelley Rice.
To you, welcome to me. My name is Shelley Rice, and I'd like to just speak very briefly about the Cyon Group, and what's coming up, where we're looking at, well, after so much discussion about student housing, I am pleased to see that the college is moving forward with a market demand study. Oh, I can't bring that? Oh, okay. Then, never mind.
Yeah.
If you'd, if you'd like, you can speak on it when it comes up.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other additional public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment, thank you, you guys. Moving on to some annual organizational items, this is Action 9.1 item, nomination and election of board officers. The board will now address its annual organizational items. At this time, I will ask the Board Secretary, Dr. Ronald Kraft, to run the election of board officers.
Thank you. This is a standard annualized kind of piece, the Secretary of the Board, which I serve as a president of the college, and also a board secretary. So, let me just kind of walk us through the introductory remarks for the election, how it unfolds, and hopefully, we will get there. So, there is, the district has two board officer positions, the first is president, the second is vice president this evening. Before making nominations, there is an opportunity for public comment on the election of officers. After that, trustees may ask questions or offer comments. After that, there will be nominations for the office of president, followed by voting. Once a president is elected, then we move on to vice president nominations, and then voting will follow that. State law and board policy allow any member to nominate a trustee for president, with or without providing reasons for making the nomination. Any trustee may nominate oneself, and any trustee, including the student trustee, who expresses his regret at not being here, but he's taking a final, so he's moving along here, may second a nomination. When there are no more nominations that are seconded, there will be a motion to close nominations, you'll get this as I walk through. Votes will be cast in the same sequence as nominated, the first nominee to receive a majority for votes, will be elected to the position of president. If no person receives a majority in the first ballot, then the person with the least votes is eliminated, and the series continues until somebody does receive four. If there is only one nominee for a position, that person is declared the president, or the vice president, as the case may be. Once a president is elected, the same process will go through the vice president. So, I'm going to start this section here, public and board comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the election of board officers? And seeing none, I will assume that there aren't. Are there any members of the Board of Trustees who would like to offer general comments before nominations? And seeing none, we're ripping through this. Nominations for, are now open for trustees for the office of president. Who wishes to be recognized to make a nomination? Yes, trustee Baldini.
I'll nominate Kyle Iverson, since there's two attorneys here, and possession is, what's the rule in that? I don't know.
Okay. Kyle Iverson, thank you. Do you, Kyle Iverson, have any comments you'd like to make regarding your nomination?
Thank you, trustee Baldini, and...
That needs to be on.
Sorry. Thank you, trustee Baldini.
With that, Kyle Iverson is nominated to be a board president. Who wishes to be recognized to make another nomination? Any further nominations? That's easy. Seeing no further nominations for the office of president, the nominations for president are closed, and you are now president of the board. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
We can clap now, if you'd like, you know, yeah, yeah, that's... Okay, we'll move on for the office of vice president. Same procedure, nominations are now open for the trustees for the office of vice president. Who wishes to be recognized to make a nomination for the office of vice president?
I would like to make a nomination of Rosara, trustee Rosara Segura.
Okay. And anyone wish to second that one?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, Baldini, thank you. Do you have any comments, Rosara, on this first?
No, I would be very proud to serve as your vice president.
Yeah, this is an opportunity really, in the comment section, for, for trustees to decline the offer. I respectfully decline, you know, kind of. Rosara Segura is nominated to be vice president. Who wishes to be recognized to make another nomination? Any and all, okay. There aren't, seeing no further recommendations for vice president. Is there a motion to close this one for vice president? Is there a motion here?
So moved.
Okay, and a second. This is a little different for this one. Nominations are closed. One nomination, so Rosara Segura, you are the vice president of the elected board for this year. Congratulations.
It will be my honor.
And with that, you are actually sitting in the right spot, so that, that, that works.
I'd like to thank you guys all for your confidence and support, and I will do my best to serve as president of the board. And it's a board that I believe is highly functional, effective, and collegial, and that is dedicated to student success. So, thank you, you guys.
Excellent.
So, moving on to subject 9.2, this is our board meeting calendar. Hope everyone has looked at that.
Yeah, and we have a couple comments on this before you take a look at this.
That's the two dates, right?
Yeah.
The asterisks, did everyone get to see the dates? January 17th, 19? Did I get a different one?
What? Oh, okay. There are, so if we, and I don't have a copy, maybe I do? Yes. So, what you might look at on the handout that you have are the meeting dates of the 17th of January, correct? And the meeting date of March 14? So it may present a little bit for you, Beth, but these dates have been chosen for mandatory training for trustees. By legislation and law, we have to provide trustee education, which we do annually for, on Ethics and Brown Act? Um, no. So that meeting will start at 4 o'clock, and the first part of the meeting from 4 to 6:30 will be the training, and then we'll start the regular meeting at 6:30 after that. So it'll look pretty much like this. Outside of that, it's, it's as, any other changes? Ah. Seven, eight, or nine. Oh, okay, yes. Got it. Okay, and so seven, eight, and nine, and I think that's, that's this one. Yeah, thanks. Let me unwind this little note she put, she gave me. So that is the, that's the, the first one. We have one more change, though. Yeah, Michael, I'm sorry?
Yes, I'd like to propose an additional change. I don't think there's anybody here that wants to explain to their significant other that they're in a board meeting on Valentine's Day particularly. I thought I noted your wife here, board chair Iverson. So I ask for consideration to that day, whether it was created by Hallmark or somebody else. It's still recognized as a significant.
Could we come to consensus on one right now?
We had talked about this, the most likely day would be the day before Wednesday. Unless you want to meet on Friday night, which is also okay.
It would be a three-day weekend already, I think. Wednesday.
So we're proposing the 2/13 rather than the 14?
That would be fine with me.
Well, I'm just taking a straw vote. You're gonna vote here in a, in a bit to adopt this, okay? Okay, I'm just so noting that, so we'll make that with that change. And then there is one other issue. Because of timing, and Eric, you may have to help me out on this, because of timing on faculty hires. This, this is, we have to have a spec, we weren't ready with some faculty hires this evening. So help me out on why that is, or can you?
Yeah, 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 I can address that really, I can address that briefly. So we have two tenure-track, full-time faculty positions that are finalizing their hires right now. The next board meeting in January is not until after the start of the next semester, and it's going to be difficult for them to teach classes before they're hired.
So what we're asking for is in January, this is, it's really a five-minute meeting. It's special. It will just be to, on an HR doc, to hire these, these folks. So it, we have, it can happen in the 7th, 8th, 9th, or 10th of, of January, that, that week. So if, if, if the board is generally good with one or more of those dates, we can work with that. We can always call the special, I'm just letting you know. We can mark the special down now, or we can just indicate at the time.
The 8th and the 10th work for me, the 9th, I have a meeting at.
So we have one on the 8th and 10th.
9th and 10th are okay for me.
Okay, 9th and 10th, okay. 9th and 10th.
Same for me, 9th and 10th.
9th and 10th.
Same for me.
We're good, okay. So, you know, we, just counting to four, we're, we're okay. So is there a? So that, January 9th or 10th for a quick special?
We have the regular meeting on the 17th, it's the third Thursday, shouldn't it have already been on the 10th?
Should've.
This one we can't have on the 10th because of the backup of the unique nature of our calendar this year. So it could have been, but it's very difficult. We would have had to close entries for that date on the 10th, next.
So the 10th will become a special meeting, and the 17th would be the regular.
Yes.
Or the 9th.
Or the 9th.
Or the 10th.
So we're good, good. We'll work with the 9th or 10th. It'll be a, a quick meeting, probably, is 5 o'clock better for people? Or you still want it like a 4:30ish?
I'm gonna make it 4 o'clock, if somebody wants to go earlier.
Okay, we'll work, we'll pull you. We're, we're, we're good, and we're solid, all right. So that was just information on the special that was good. So we are now adopting the meeting calendar with the only change, which is the regular meeting date of 2/14 is changed to 2/13.
I had a question about the, the CEO evaluation. Is it on the, is it set for May, or is it set for June?
It kind of appears in the middle there, and I'm not sure. But we have one, one special for CEO eval, right, one day? We decided to do that, I think, was Raphael's suggestion.
I said that the May 9th, I have, I'm gonna be in Sacramento all day, but I was planning to be here in the, in the evening, but if we start really early, it would be problematic.
Okay, it's, again, another special, and we're okay, we don't have to adopt it on the, on this calendar, correct, Carolie? Yep, just double checking. Okay. So we'll, we'll leave those a little out on the date, but the, so the regular meeting dates along the left here, and I have the other information we need, you would move for adoption with that change.
And so January, the special will be on the 9th, or?
Or the 10th.
It'll be on the 9th or 10th, and we'll pull you on that.
Okay.
Does everybody have it with those changes?
Yeah.
Does that work for everybody at this point? So we don't need a motion on this, do we?
You do. I think you have to have an action on this item. Accept it, propose, adopt it.
Trustee Baldini motion. Trustee Baker seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are we gonna use our fancy voting system?
I don't have a laptop.
Yeah, we're ready. No.
Sorry.
Then we'll go, we're gonna go manual tonight, all right? Yes, which will be fine, and then we'll, starting in January, we'll make sure that we do.
Sorry.
Good. So what was that vote, I'm sorry?
That was trustee Baldini motioned, trustee Baker seconded.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
In unanimous. Okay, so consent calendar passes with those changes. So moving on to action items, we have the contract with the Scion Group, which.
No, you're, no, we still have 9-3.
Where, where? Sorry, I'm bouncing on two agendas, sorry. So next, procedural is 9.3, that's the appointing of trustees, members to the committee. And so we have the legislative committee, the audit and finance committee, and the real property committee. So I have kind of mulled these over. And for the legislative committee, I thought we would keep that going. And I was hoping that trustee Baker, you would like to chair that one? And I was thinking that trustee Goff, if you would be interested in doing those.
I honestly don't think you want me at a legislative affairs committee, to be honest with you.
Okay.
I have the best fit.
Is there anyone else that would want to be on the legislative committee? Hearing crickets. I will, I'll work on it, but for now, I'll just, Baker and myself.
Kooaja wanted to be on that, for sure, he let me know, so.
So next, we would, so for legislative, it would be Baker and I, and our student trustee Husseifa. And for our audit and finance committee, I was gonna have two trustees, trustee Baker and Segura, if you guys would like to be on the audit and finance committee. I think I'd rather have two on it for now. I was gonna let, I was gonna have you on the McPherson Distinguished Teachers for now. And then.
So Goff or McPherson?
McPherson.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay.
So then for our real property committee, I was going to pull myself from that one and have trustee Rios as chair. Keep trustee Baldini on it, and add trustee Dodd, if you guys were willing to serve on that committee, real property.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
I accept.
Can, can anyone go to those committee meetings?
Yes, not a trustee.
I'm really interested in the real property committee, so.
They're all open.
Okay.
No. If you have a fourth trustee, you, you're, you're in session.
Oh, okay. No worries.
You're just there, you give the.
So then well, we can. All right, I've already got some scratches and scribbles on it.
Okay, I'm, I've got your stuff.
So I've got Rios, Baldini, and Dodd for the real property. And we have the audit and finance, and then those are our standing committees.
So that's 9-3, now you're moving to 9-4.
So now, moving to 9-4, our trustee member for our district auxiliary service. I was going to sit on that one, I haven't been on that committee yet, I'd like to learn about that. And next is 9.5, that's our viticulture and winery technology foundation. I was hoping that trustee Segura, we've all kind of ruled that out as being in the wine industry. So trustee Rosara, would you like to take a turn on the?
Sure, I'll give it a try.
Okay.
At those, just for, and, and maybe this is a point of kind of clarity, at those, those are also open in their Brown Act, and so other trustees, as long as we don't have more than three, those could be attended to as well.
All right.
Great, thank you.
So committees, that's all done.
You're good.
Moving on to kind of this.
Reports, you're here now. 10-1.
So, a little bit of a slightly different structure of reports here. This is section 10.1, this item is placed on the agenda, agenda to provide an opportunity for the senates and unions to address the board directly on topics of interest. It's not a requirement. So first, we have academic senate report, Amanda Badgett.
Good evening, board. And welcome to the new trustees, Elizabeth Goff and Jeff Dodd. My name's Amanda Badgett, I'm the academic senate president here at Nap Valley College, and one of the most important things that my faculty do aside from teaching, which is clearly the most important, and supporting students, is that we, there are, there is a swath of policies that come your way that fall under what is called the 10-plus one. Sorry for those of you, this is a review. In any case, one, one of the most important ones, if one can say such a thing, is coming to you, having gone through our vetting and approval process, and that is the board policy 4030, which is academic freedom. And the fact is, we have a subscription service with the league, and most other board policies have what would be considered sort of boilerplate language. This one is an exception, because it is in fact something that should be worded and written according to what a faculty believes. There's no, as it were, boilerplate language, and that is coming to you for second reading tonight. And I just simply would like to say about academic freedom, it's a, it's obviously a cornerstone of higher ed, and one that sort of is, it's important to realize that early education, secondary education, is about the establishing and the reinforcing of the kind of standard narratives and norms of our culture. Higher ed is there to question all of that, and to mix it up, and to look at the paradox, and the, and some of the contradictions, obviously, and to dig beneath the surface. And academic freedom allows faculty to do just that. In my own discipline, for example, I teach art history here at the college. Around, in at least three or four of my classes, I, I teach abstract art. After sometimes weeks or months of representational art, we get to a place where they're looking at a white square painted on a white canvas, and the students don't like it, generally speaking. Some, some are okay. It's dumb, it's a fraud, I don't get it, my brother could do that, my little brother could do that. And here is where academic freedom and my ability to frame for my students the importance of that comes in, and that could be applied to any discipline, whether it is a controversial piece of literature, or, for example, a, a piece of music that may have been banned a century ago. So I bring this up just as a kind of little primer for the new board members, but also to thank you, I hope in advance, for approving our academic freedom board policy, and to also be appreciative that you're upholding this principle, and that we as faculty take it very seriously. And ideally, we take that as a great responsibility that we apply to ourselves and to each other. So thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Next, 10.2, administrative confidential senate report, President Robert Harris.
Thank you and good evening, board, and a special welcome to trustee Dunn, trustee Goff. Congratulations. The administrative senate, by the way, is, my name's Robert Harris, I'm the, as trustee Iverson said, I'm the president of the admin senate. We, we continue to work across campus, collaborate with our colleagues in the faculty and classify through any number and variety of committees, processes, to move things through and keep the college moving forward. Biggest and most on our agenda is, we, the senate as a whole would like to gratefully acknowledge all that Ken Arnold has done and meant to this campus. He has been going on a retirement run, I guess, so to speak. The countdown is finally done, Ken. You're at one, so, but with Ken and his 33-plus years on this campus, when you lose somebody with that much institutional memory and knowledge, it's a challenge to overcome. The institution will continue, and Ken will still be around in one shape or capacity, but when you lose that much institutional knowledge, it leaves a hole. We are welcoming, we love to welcome Amber Wade as our new police chief, and she will be stepping into the administrative ranks. But I came, really came to, to know Ken in my five and a half, going on six years here. If you get a chance ever in the future to sit in a college van for seven hours. If you get a chance ever in the future to sit in a college van for seven hours, driving down Interstate Five, you will learn a lot about the college that was never published or seen anywhere, and you swear on a stack of Bibles not to repeat anything. But at any rate, um, uh, we greatly acknowledge his, his vast, uh, his history, his, everything he's meant to the college. And Ken, big shoes to fill, but we appreciate everything you've done for the Administrative Senate and for the campus as a whole. And to that end, tomorrow night, uh, we will be hosting at my house the Administrative Senate Confidential and, and Holiday Party and White Elephant Gift. And that, I'm hoping, will turn into Ken's last hurrah and a roast, so. But anyway, um, uh, we're very pleased to have had Ken, uh, to work with for these many years, and we'll miss him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Uh, next, ten-point-three, Associated Students of Napa Valley College Report, Rafael Monzo, President.
Yes, hi, good evening. Um, I'll introduce myself as well, following in line with everyone else. Um, yes, as Kyle just introduced, um, my name is Rafael Monzo. I'm the President of the Associated Students Government here on campus. Um, and I think that, um, I'd like you to sort of form your own opinions or kind of maybe do your own research as to what it is my group does, uh, new members. Um, I, I don't know that I really wanna, um, lay anything down. I am always saying, uh, every year that like, we have a, we only serve a year term, so every year, there's just this new introduction and this new, um, freedom to become whatever it is we're going to become. Um, it's really a whole new team of students together who have been elected into their positions, and it's really up to them what they're going to become, all the good, or perhaps not so good that they're going to end up producing or not producing, right? And so, um, I just, I think that I'd like you to just watch and, uh, take note of for yourselves who the team is right now. Um, our student trustee, of course, uh, serves on the Board as well. Um, but yes, it is finals week. Um, otherwise, I'm sure he'd enthusiastically just be right there. Um, so I'll go ahead and report now, uh, for this month. So, uh, a handful of our members, um, volunteered for, uh, Human Resources Job Fair. Um, they needed some extra hands, and, uh, I volunteered last year. Um, I think that was their first time doing that particular job fair format that they had just, um, put together. It was, uh, Kim Smith, uh, who did that, um, and she's no longer here, but, um, they kept her format, and it was really successful. Um, I mean, I thought so. I, and I thought it ran, uh, quite smooth again. Um, and, and again, we were just happy to lend a hand, me and the other members who, uh, volunteered. Uh, it's always a good time. Um, the Board also, uh, approved, uh, a budget in, uh, in favor of purchasing art from the, uh, art show that the Visual Arts Center was putting on because, um, a, a member requested it and said, uh, you know, I think it would be really neat for us to just approve a budget, um, an up-to-budget for purchasing some art because all the money's going to go towards scholarships for the art students. So, you know, um, that's something I think our Board has maybe never done before, like, thought to do with, with, with our funds, um, and not approve too much or anything, but just to, you know, support. Um, and I know that I personally have gone and purchased, um, art from the sales whenever they come up. So I, I was really, um, impressed by, by the, uh, my teammate who suggested it. Uh, I thought that was nice. Um, and then lastly, we did just, um, successfully, uh, host the Angel Tree Event. It's, uh, where we set up a Christmas tree in the, um, lo-, library lobby here on campus at McCarthy Library. And we get gift tags from two different sources. One is the, uh, Child Development Center here on campus, uh, and the other is the Salvation Army. Um, you might have seen the electronic mail that went out about it, but, uh, just in case you missed it, or for, um, anyone who maybe wasn't on those email lists already, um, we, we just get, uh, we, they, they ask the kids what it is that they like, um, and just a, a gift request for the holidays. Um, and so, uh, first, we do the tags for the Child Development Center, and then we get tags from Salvation Army for local children, and so it's a really nice gesture. It's something we've traditionally done, uh, annually for the last fourteen years, I would say. Um, but it's really anyone's guess as to which year we may or may not, um, choose to host that event. So, uh, we did so once again, and it was, uh, again, a rousing success. Um, and I think that a lot of kids are gonna be really happy to at least have one special, uh, thought-out gift, too. I, I went the extra mile to make sure that we got the requests from the children because at first, we just got the rosters, and I said, you know, every year, we usually do find out what it is that the children want. Um, because I think that that attention to detail means a lot, especially to our, you know, our little ones who are right here on campus. Um, and I've seen them receive the gifts just once, but, um, I'll never forget it. I, you know, it was, uh, really cool, really magical. And that's, uh, my report for the month. Um, I'll stay as long as I can. You know, I enjoy these meetings. But, uh, it is finals week. I do have some more work that I need to do, and, um, kind of checking in on a family emergency that also needs my attention, so I'll stay as long as I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Rafael. Um, moving on to ten-point-four, Classified Association Report, Jan Chard, President. I do not see Jan, so ten-point-five, Classified Senate Report. I do see Martin Schumaker, President.
Hi, I'm Martin Schumaker, Classified Senate President. I'd like to welcome the new board members. My wish is that we continue to be parents for the Christmas period, for the next year. So, happy holidays, regardless of which ones you celebrate this year.
Thank you, Marty. Uh, moving to ten-point-six, Faculty Association Report, Kristy Uomo, President.
Good evening, Board, and welcome, you board members. Um, not a whole lot to report. Negotiations, as always, ongoing. And, uh, we're hoping to have a calendar for you very soon. Uh, yeah, uh, we did, uh, we did manage to, uh, we implemented social science coordinator positions this semester, and, uh, and so that's been really good. We have, uh, um, each, uh, each, uh, each department of that division will now have a coordinator. Uh, something that I wanted to bring up also was that last weekend, I went to the, uh, the statewide CTA LGBT Conference, uh, the issues conference, and, uh, a lot of the, um, uh, the focus was around the importance of having an LGBT Studies, um, program at every community college. And I just wanted to, cause I always like to point out when Napa gets complimented on something, that, uh, actually, the presenter mentioned that Napa has had one of the longest-running LGBT Studies programs uh, out of community colleges in California, and just how admired that program is, and how other programs in other colleges have actually looked at Napa's program when creating their own. And I was just very proud, and I just wanted you to know, so you could be proud, too. Uh, and, uh, lastly, I wanted to congratulate my Vice President at the Faculty Association, and that is Dr. Eileen Tahada here, um, for all of her hard work, the hard work that she did for herself for this, and the hard work that she does for our faculty and for our college every single day. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristy. Uh, next is ten-point-seven, Superintendent.
Yeah, and we have no report tonight.
Wonderful, not wonderful, but we're moving right along.
No, that's, I feel, yeah, that's good.
Uh, alright, so, so, uh, eleven, Approval Minutes. This is, uh, Approval Minutes of eleven eighteen eighteen. It was our regular meeting. Any-
Hearing no objections.
Hearing no objections. I would also ask that, uh, our two new trustees might want to recuse themselves. They weren't on the Board for those minutes.
You didn't abstain.
Okay, uh, so, motion.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Do we have to? Well, we're, we're not-
You're already there now, so you're fine.
You asked for a motion, so.
So I had Baldini with the motion.
Rafael.
Or Baker with the second, and two abstentions, trustee Dodd and Goff.
Two abstentions, got it.
Alright, uh, so next, item twelve, Information Discussion Items, meat and potatoes. Twelve-point-one, twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen Progress Report, Dr. Robin Wornhall.
Uh, good evening, Board, and welcome, in particular, the new members, trustee Goff and trustee Dodd, who maybe stepped out for a second. Um, each year, the, oh, sorry. I'm Robin Wornall, and I am the Dean of Research, Planning, and Institutional Effectiveness. Here at the college, we, um, shorten the office name and call ourselves RIPi because it's a bit of a mouthful to say, Research, Planning, and Institutional Effectiveness each time. Um, so each year, uh, the RIPi Office compiles an annual progress report tracking accomplishments associated with the institutional strategic plan. And more specifically, the report summarizes accomplishment, accomplishments associated with the planning priorities established for the most recent academic year. So I'm here tonight to present the two thousand seventeen eighteen Progress Report. My presentation will be organized in three parts, and those include, uh, the purpose of the report, the focus and structure of the report, and a summary of highlights from two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. So first, regarding the purpose, uh, in October, I presented the Core Indicators Report to the Board of Trustees, and I indicated that accreditation requirements provided the external context for that report tracking our performance relative to institution-set standards representing academic quality. The Annual Progress Report represents another way that the college monitors its performance relative to established goals, and in this case, uh, it, the accomplishments are relative to the planning priorities established for last year. Uh, documents such as these help address accreditation standards associated with institutional effectiveness and the role of the Governing Board. And within the standards pertaining to the Governing Board, Accreditation Standard four C eight, which appears on the slide, uh, states, "To ensure the institution is accomplishing its goals for student success, the Governing Board regularly reviews key indicators of student learning and achievement and institutional plans for improving academic quality." The Board of Trustees approves pla- planning, uh, priorities, institutional planning priorities, and the Annual Progress Report represents an effective institutional practice of reporting out accomplishments or closing the loop regarding those established planning priorities. The two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen Progress Report provides a sense of the substantive improvements that were made across the institution to promote the five planning priorities and improve student success last year. So the planning priorities that, uh, were established for two thousand seventeen eighteen span the five areas that are outlined here. Those include Student Learning Outcomes Assessment, Student Success, Distance Education and Off-Site Offerings, Institutional Planning, and Resource Planning. The two thousand seventeen eighteen Progress Report includes a one-page summary of institutional accomplishments that helped promote each of the planning priorities with one page designated to each priority. Uh, the summaries focus on activities new and unique to two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, and each summary of accomplishments is followed by a list of links to resources documenting the improvements implemented last year. Uh, the idea is that the report summarizes recent accomplishments, and the reference documents provide additional detail and evidence of improvement. The Progress Report also incorporates institutional performance indicators, and there are five types of indicators included in the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen Progress Report, and those measures include Student Educational attainment, which spans degrees, certificates, and transfer; Career Technical Preparation, and that includes things like license or exam pass rates, job placement rates, and satisfaction as reported on the Employment Outcome Survey; Student Learning Outcomes attainment, uh, student progress, that includes pursuit of educational goals, momentum points, and transition to college-level work. And finally, the fifth category is students served. The performance measures are reported, are presented in the form of a report card, and as has been our practice in recent years, the report card includes both color coding and shading to convey both the magnitude and direction of changes over the established baselines from two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. So some of the highlights associated with the planning priorities from two thousand seventeen eighteen include the Outcomes Assessment work among faculty across instructional programs, and that includes increased coordination and dialogue across programs, particularly through the assessment of our general education outcomes. MVC also expanded opportunities for students through the development of local and regional partnerships, and we increased course offerings and integrated technology to support students attending classes at off-site locations, that is away from the main campus, and through distance education. Uh, this slide summarizes some of the most notable increases in the performance measures. And between two thousand thirteen fourteen and two thousand seventeen eighteen, MVC increased the number of students attaining educational goals associated with degrees, certificates, and transfer. And of particular note is the shift toward ADTs. Those are Associate Degrees for Transfer. And that, those increases were brought about by both the expansion of offerings as well as the number of students pursuing degrees of that kind between two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, and last year. Uh, so some select highlights are reported on the slide, so other ones, uh, so the, actually, the increase in ADTs conferred was, oh, more than seven hundred percent over that period. Uh, there was also a more than a hundred percent increase in the number of, uh, certificate recipients, and a twenty-one percent increase in transfers to CSU institutions. Uh, and it should be noted that these increases occurred during a period when both the number of students and student enrollments actually decreased since two thousand thirteen fourteen. Uh, let's see, other highlights include that, uh, job placement rates increased by eleven percent, and, uh, Student Learning Outcomes attainment increased by at least thirty percent at all levels. So that includes a course-level attainment, program-level attainment for instructional programs, and service-level attainment. Uh, the Annual Progress Report is reviewed by the Planning and Budget Committee, shared with the Governing Board, and distributed among campus, the campus community each year. And this report was presented to the Planning and Budget Committee at its meeting in November, and it will be distributed to the campus community and posted on the RIPi portion of the website associated with institutional planning following this meeting.
Thank you. It was a very, I was still mulling over all the information, so. Thank you, uh, Dr. Robin. Are there any questions, you guys? Hello, trustees?
I had just a quick question about the, uh, strategic plan. It says that this, um, institutional strategic plan goes through two thousand nineteen. Is that through calendar year nineteen, or how does?
So that's, uh, one, uh, detail that's noted in kind of the introductory portion of the report that was associated with the, um, the Boardage and Item, is that originally, the institutional plan that, that these planning priorities were associated with was set to span, uh, span two thousand fourteen through two thousand nineteen. However, um, last year, you might recall, since you were here, that, uh, that we, um, updated our institutional strategic plan, and so now there's a new one that spans two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty-one. So this is, this report kind of effectively closes the books on that past one, and now we're looking at the updated institutional strategic plan.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Robin.
Thanks.
Next, twelve-point-two, this is our Public-Pprivate Partnerships, P three. This is going to be Dr. Kraft and Bob Parker.
And, yeah, not you, right? Yeah. Will do. You can open.
I did have-
Oh, yeah.
-two, uh, public comments.
Go for it.
Would you guys like to present before or after?
Oh, after.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, can you open this up? Basically, um, kind of a quick update. Um, part of the, um, the, uh, inquiry around the wine train specifically, and the reason it's called a P three, we've educated the Board on several occasions on, you know, what a private, private-public partnership might be, um, both in subcommittee and at the Board meetings. And we'll get back to that. What I wanted to do tonight is just briefly talk about one of the many inquiries, and that's really what it is. I think the, some angst was created by a newspaper article way back that really quoted the wine train folks as what they would like to see the college do in its future. And so, and so some inquiry has kind of gone in there. What I've done on this really is just, is just do some wine train actions and some actions that have kind of responded by the, by the college. They kind of work roughly across from each other. But just to kind of give you an idea, generally speaking, the district will receive ideas for projects, inquiries for collaboration, P3s, every week. About every week, someone will call and propose something. I'd like to do whatever it might be, whether it's anything from a new vending solution or a new truck, or, you know, a new cafe, or whatever it might be. This is one. I don't mean to minimize this, because this could be something in the future, but we're listening so far. So, the wine train proposed ideas on a future wine train trajectory and back, way back in January of 2017, that was just to educate the college on what they wanted to do in the community. And it was a very nice meeting. Really, what they said is they were trying to rebrand the wine train to regain its lost glory, so to speak. It had a great reputation for decades in the Valley, and in purchasing it with a larger group, which they let us know, their goal was to rebuild it, make it a thing that Nappans could be proud of, and that was that meeting. Later, and they proposed that the college consider ideas to collaborate. They outed, you know, they outlined, they outlined different kinds of things, and I wrote down a couple of things here. One was work-study. Are you interested in work-study? We are. Could interns work at the wine train? Are there classes that you have in hospitality or in event planning? Is there anything that we could do as a local employer to increase our collaborative structure? And that's generally, you know, the process that we went through. We provided, we outlined our current projects. I provided, you know, that team with a schedule, a program, had them look at our EMP, FMPs, and their website data, and that's, again, way back in January. I don't necessarily want to read this all, because you can read it for you. But what you'll see, and I'll keep going through this a little bit. And in February of 2017, the board subcommittee, at that time it was an ad hoc subcommittee, met with the principals, and they, and the wine train presented some information about how, here we are in the Valley. Is the, is the college interested in working with the wine train on future endeavors? That's as specific as it is and was, and our answer was, well, sure. You know, like every other institution. We provided a tour for them, introductions to faculty, staff, and administration, especially in the CTE, is Career and Technical Education Areas, in March, following that up. They reviewed the college site. They also reviewed Napa sites for potential use and relocations of some aspects of their operations. And that's as specific as they really got. They were more interested than anything in trying to see how they could eventually interest the college in culinary issues. So we didn't have a full-blown culinary program at the time. Interesting, we do offer culinary at the Upper Valley Cooking School. We do offer different kinds of classes. That's kind of where that went. Let me just jump down a little bit. The wine train staff discussed ways to identify potential land use. Now they're getting more specific, right? By tracks on the southeast side of the campus at the board's subcommittee, and we're jumping like almost a year here, in August of 18. Their interest really is in trying to locate whatever it is that they might do someday near our tracks. The tracks run near the college, not on the college, but that made sense for them. They also, at the same time, and have been and still are, in conversations with the city of Napa, the tracks run down farther, and in conversations with the Gasser Foundation. The tracks run very near their areas as well. Our group, I'm dropping over the other side here, in, and I probably skipped a line there, I'm sorry. So I'm going to go over on the staff side. Napa Valley College staff met with the cabinet, our cabinet, way back to talk about in April of 17, and then September of 17. And really, we weren't ready as a college to address any of their thought processes. They didn't bring anything to us, and we were listening, and it's okay. That's fine. So you'll see a big gap in there between September of 17 and August of 18. Basically, there was very little conversation, bits here and there. And our internal structuring, so the continuation of conversations in our career and technical area, our culinary instructor and events folk, and in the hospitality area, inquired, you know, is there some, is there something we can do here? What do we think? Remember, all these people are connected in some fashion in Napa, because there are, this is a small town. So most of the people, most of our professors in these areas also serve with and in and around all the restaurants and hospitality. Wine train not excluded on that, as part of advisory committees, part of connections, events, those things. So, here we are. Wine train seeks, and so I'm going to jump down here a little bit. The wine train met with college staff to discuss possible ideas in September of 2018. And this possible ideas is just basically as deliberate as I can be. The possible ideas included, can we develop culinary programs together? Is that possible? And that's a, that's a programmatic issue. Can we, could we call, could we call on the college to work through the career center to get students? Could we develop with the college any future activities? Now we start to get really more specific. Our staff met with the wine train to discuss potential next steps in May. That's on the right-hand side there. They sought next steps, and there was another register article in January of 18. Staff meets with the wine train and suggests presentation to the full board, which is basically our suggestion to them to say, you know, what is it that we are considering? And the answer is, nothing yet. There is no presentation, there's no project lists, they're not suggesting anything specific yet. What we are, what we're waiting for now is a closure. My work right now, along with the college, is to meet with faculty and staff, check on, see where they are. Are you still interested in pursuing collaborations? If one of those collaborations ends up in a shared use, which eventually could lead to a P3, then so be it. But we're working through that shared governance process now. The next step, if there was any likely next step, would be to get, get a specific proposal from them, more specific enough where I could bring it to the board to say, for you to consider moving to a next step, which would be anything from a feasibility study to a, we're interested, we need more specificity. I'm going to go back to Academic Senate. My colleague and Remley talked about, anything that's programmatic here at the college, we're focusing in and around student need, and then, and in secondary, how it works its way through the faculty and recognizing that participatory governance, and also the shared governance process of this. So if there were anything that was programmatic that's coming out of this, then that will work its way up through faculty, up through the administration, and kind of work it that way. It's been a slow march. I mean, this has been several years now, which is standard for higher ed. We're not in a rush to do this. They're not in any particular rush to do anything else, and this is, this is where we are on the update. So anything you think you know outside of this, or you may suggest that you know, it's not true. So I'm open for questions from the board, and we'll come back with more updates as we, as we learn it. And, but we're waiting now, really, for the wine train to approach the college with even more specifics based on any, any information we can provide them.
Trustee Baker, I think.
Okay. You're thinking?
Did you have?
I'm having a little trouble with the formatting of the document.
Oh, yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't really meant to be linear across. It was basically actions of the wine train on the left, so to speak. These are things that they did. And we really, on the right-hand side, it's been mostly listening. The college has listened and then responded. We'd like a tour, here's a tour. We'd like to meet with, with me or the cabinet, which they have not. They just met with me, or the subcommittee to, to talk about our potential in the future. And those are, that's, that's how it lines up.
And I guess my, my big question, because there's a few times where it's like things kind of die down, and then it comes back.
Yes.
And then it dies down, and then it comes back. Who's driving that? Are we driving that, or are they driving that?
Both. If you look at, let me see if I can find it a little bit. So, I don't think you, can you point to this? I'm not sure. The one on the right-hand side, that is, go up one more, another one, and another one there, right there. MVC administrators discuss wine train and counts with the council of presidents, part of our shared governance process. Senate leaders, we talked to several people. Met with the faculty and staff of CTE, determine long-range planning through April. What we really did is now, if you move down to the next section there, we weren't, we hadn't completed a lot of our internal planning. So we put this on hold. My basic response to, to them, which was, the college is not yet ready to look at any specific thing that you do. Our culinary program's not developed. We're still working on our fine-tuning of the FMP. EMP update is happening, the technology plan is, so, so there we are. So in between. And if you remember, we were considering going out for a bond during that point in time. There was, there was some voices in the community that somehow conflated the wine train being interested in collaborating with the college as some piece of a potential future bond. And that was certainly something that we didn't want, nor did they want. So we dropped it. They've been doing what they're doing, which you have seen on the left-hand side, which is building their brand and their image in the county and the community. And during this time, too, they got into very deep conversations, as I understand it, with the city of Napa, discussing Kennedy Parkland with Gasser Foundation and discussing, and I think they're moving forward with Gasser Foundation on at least a project. And that's where we are. So I don't know when we'll, when we're ready to listen. You know, they come back with something specific, and then I can come to you with something specific.
Trustee Goff?
So I think part of the confusion might be, this sounds like more of a collaboration, not a public-private partnership. This is more of a collaboration, working together with the wine train, and, and basically taking advantage of what each of us have to offer to build programs and to build opportunity for students, correct?
That's right. To this point, it is exactly that. It could, if it, if it keeps going some direction, could it, what could it turn into? I don't know.
Right. Okay. And I think that's where maybe some of my confusion came from, too, with, with calling it a public-private partnership. It's really more of a collaboration, it's more of a, a, working together. Okay. Great, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Trustee Dodd?
Yeah, I'm just curious, I think you alluded to it earlier, but what would be the next steps? I mean, maybe, let's talk about step one, and then what would be step two? And the potential variables that come in between, but how could you see this moving forward generally?
Right. I mean, I think the only, the next step would be, would be them proposing something more specifically, and then, and then the college somehow granting them the authority to inquire more, to check more. They would want to, if they wanted to do something on our site, they would certainly have to go through a whole bunch of feasibility pieces. That would be on them to do. I would probably come back to this board and say, are you willing to allow them to conduct their own feasibility study as other entities have done? And yea or nay? And that's what they, that would be the next logical step. If they, if they found, after doing a feasibility study, it was just an impossibility, then we're not going to collaborate on any physical site, but we'd certainly collaborate on these other, other things, the internships and the other possibilities, so.
They already met with the real property subcommittee, is that, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that next step wouldn't be a follow-up meeting with the subcommittee? Be a follow-up presentation with the rest of the board?
It could be. I think that would be, that's going to be up to you all, whether it's, whether it's an information item to the, this group or an information item to the subcommittee. If it's a longer piece, the purpose of those subcommittees is to have full presentations so they can absorb, and then the subcommittee presents to the larger board their findings and, and recommendations. So however you think that.
I would certainly welcome a presentation.
There is nothing yet. So as soon as they decide whatever that they want to pursue or not pursue, then we'll schedule something.
Thank you.
Anything else? Tons of real property as their next committee meeting topic. We do have a public comment from Valerie Wolf.
Good evening. Nice to see all your faces. I'm here because I have become interested in this public-private partnership that the college trust is looking into. And I'm not very informed about it. I actually tried to get online yesterday, and there was no support document so that I could come to this meeting prepared with some questions. But I'm just going to do it off the cuff and say a little bit about myself and what I believe is potentially happening here at the college. I lived with a developer for 10 years, and I'm an environmentalist, so I got really, really savvy about development speak and the mind of people who are looking to take property and make it into profit. So when I heard that the college was considering a public-private partnership, which I don't know a lot about, and I also heard that housing was being proposed for the college, I went, why is housing being proposed at a college where students are only here for two years? And the other thing is, as far as the wine train goes, why aren't, if, if the college is considering having, you know, some sort of a collaboration with them, why isn't the college going, oh, okay, here, here's what we want. This is what you can do, this is what we want. If it's going to become some sort of a collaboration, then why aren't you telling them, this is what we want, and this is what you can do? But the thing that has the biggest red flag for me is the thing that's not being talked about tonight, which is housing. And I'm just going, why do we need housing when it's a two-year college? And then, because I am an environmentalist, and I lived with this developer for so many years, I know how easy it is to have development become an agenda. And there's incredible property here on the college, and it's fine being just the way it is, not developed. If anything, it should have trees planted and make it an open space and make it a place for students that are actually going to college here to go out and have enrichment in the environment. I think most people that are going to college here are probably living at home or living pretty close to this area. So I just felt compelled to come in and make that statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. So that, we're going to move on to information item 12.3, campus security and safety. This was, I believe, a item that trustee Baker and Baldini, I think we all want to see it, but. Robert Parker and Amber Wade.
Double team here, yeah.
It was, I saw it.
That's going to be for action item.
It was on there earlier, I saw it, but I don't know where it went.
Got it. Got it.
Board, I am Lieutenant Amber Wade, soon to be chief, so Saturday we'll, we'll do the change of command ceremony. I did do a PowerPoint, so you've got some pictures. I'm a visual person, so it'll keep it a little more entertaining. So, Catherine's gonna go grab that real quick. We're gonna kind of tag-team this a little bit. I put the presentation together. But I was asked to do just a, a basic safety presentation, so you all know what we're doing, what's going on, some of, some of the new things. Technology-wise and, yeah, just kind of how everything's been going these last few years. So, I don't know any jokes.
So, neither, neither do I, but just to, the reason that the two of us are here, I, security is not my area. Notice I'm not carrying anything, but, but security does involve, and as you'll see in Amber's presentation, it really does involve work of the facilities department and the institutional technology department, both of which are part of the administrative services area. And so you'll see that in order to improve security and maintain security, we're, Amber's going to be talking about things like clearing areas on campus, that would be from a facility standpoint, lighting on campus, again, facilities, security cameras on campus, and you'll hear that we've completed our first phase of upgrades and improvements and we'll be moving into a couple of other phases, which Amber has a lot more information about. But, but as I say, it really is, the, the focus of security is really something for college police, but with the support of the areas in administrative services. And Marty, we will be talking about LED lighting on, on campus. So, hopefully you have observed, if you've been to campus over the course of a few months, that lighting in certain areas has improved. Working on upgrading lighting equipment, particularly around this building but other buildings on campus with more powerful LED lighting equipment. So, it looks like we may have our PowerPoint presentation.
And we'll make sure we upload this to the board doc site as well.
How do we do the full view? Is it that? Okay, okay. So, as Bob talked about, it really is a collaboration. Just so you know, we, we typically have one officer on duty. So, we need a lot of help from our community and, and the support from, from the campus as well. So, it is a collaboration. Our calls for service and our cases typically are at a steady increase. We had a couple of quiet years, 2015, 2016, there was a lull. It, it was very mellow and, and I don't know why. And then we saw this increase the last, last couple of years. Calls for service and cases going up, that's not really a bad thing. We want to be called. We want our community to trust us enough to, to give us a call and be like, hey, I need help, or hey, there's a suspicious person. So, so overall, that, that's a positive thing. Because of some of the technology we've had and our officers' hard efforts, we're closing more cases. So, we're sending them down to the district attorney's office to, to be prosecuted, and so that's, that's a good thing. Another thing to note is our threat assessments. Currently, the college police does all threat assessments on campus. That is going to change and I'll address that later. But with the, everything that's going around, I mean, in the, in the community, at, at schools, active shooters, armed intruders, threat assessments are on the rise. It's, it's taking a, a front seat on a national level as well for, for law enforcement to be trained in it. It's, it's not a common thing for, for your, your everyday patrol officer to be trained in threat assessment. Our college police is. We take that very seriously. And with our campus community, they do send a lot our way. Threat assessments take time and, and a lot of effort. You know, they might refer someone to us that's acting suspicious. We do a little more research on the person and, and they are exhibiting some behaviors of concern. We might do a full assessment on the person and maybe they're not a danger to themselves or, or other people. We don't see them a threat at that time, but that doesn't mean we just close the door, close the case out and move on. We continue to monitor the person, check in with them, hey, how are you doing? What's going on? So, it's a continued thing. And even when they leave the campus, we don't just close the door. We, we might pass it along to, to a local police department or if they're going to a different school. So, so that's kind of why, why they take so much time and effort. Another issue that, that's hot, this is everywhere, this isn't just at the college, but, but homeless, it is on a national level. Napa has pushed all of their homeless services to South Napa. Right now, it's split. So, we have the, the shelter that's over kind of by the movie theater, the fire engine four over there. And then Health and Human Services is over by DMV. What's in between that? The college. So, we have a lot of homeless activity passing through the campus. And I know, I'm sure you've all seen tents out there, especially by Imola. Our area, our open space area north of our tennis courts is where, sorry, I should say a little further out, there's a service road there. And then on the other side is where we get most of our homeless encampments. The way we, we deal with homeless encampments, every few weeks, we'll go through, walk through, patrol them. If we do find a homeless encampment, we post it. So, we give them 48-hour notice. We can't go in and clear out all of their belongings just that day. We give them a notice and say, hey, you need to be out, you're on college property, you're not allowed to be here. Then it's, it's the effort of facilities to go in and this is not just one person going in to clear out an encampment. You can see here, this is one of the encampments. We have many on campus and things build up. If we clear out an encampment, facilities might not be able to get out there. We have three facilities workers, we're working on getting more. We clear out the encampment, if the tents and everything aren't pulled down, new, new homeless come back in. So, it's, like I say, we, we do our, our best effort. Currently, they are not right around campus. We don't have any serious issues with criminal activity. So, we don't find homeless wandering onto campus and committing crimes that often. It does happen. But the, the main thing that's preventing that is patrol. It's resources and time. It, it really is. And, and most police departments right now, they're averaging that 70% of their calls are dealing with homeless. So, it, it, like I say, it's a problem that's increasing all over the, the nation. And some of it's a danger. Right there, you can see, those are propane tanks that they were using as a fire ring. So, that's what we found. I know you've seen some fires out there. So, we, we found that and then we have to be careful about how they're removed. You know, there's also hazmat that, that's going along with that. So, if I had the answer, believe me, I would not be here, because it, it is a battle. We're doing the best we can. And, and it must be noted too, there are many different reasons why people are homeless. We kind of have three major categories right now. We have the people that we know really well. I mean, they've been around Napa, they've been homeless for 20-plus years. We know their names, we know who they are. They show up on campus, hey, how you doing? What's going on? Where's your encampment right now? So, so we know them. We have another group that typically they're younger. They choose to be homeless. They don't want the services you offer them, they want nothing to do with you. And what we find is they're your criminals, okay? It might be narcotics-based, it might be some other issues they have going on, but they're stealing from other homeless, they're breaking into different things, our ball fields and that type of thing. So, they're more of our problem group that we, we tend to deal with. And then you have this new group that's coming in. And we just did a clearing last week and I saw some of the pictures and of the, the 12 people that we talked to, 10 of them, I had no clue who they were. The word is out that Napa has great services and they're coming into Napa. And I've actually had some of the homeless that we know well come and complain to me about all the new homeless coming in. I'm like, I'm sorry, there's not much I can do. But, um, so, so those are kind of the, the groups that we're dealing with, with homeless. We also have different areas. So, the, the areas south of Imola, they're not just college property. We have flood, flood control, so they own part of that strip. There's Caltrans that owns part of that strip. So, if you see tents up there, it's, it might not be our property, it's other areas. And believe me, they know, they know those borders better than we do. So, we push them out, they go right over there and then they get pushed different places. So, I know I'm rushing through this stuff pretty quickly. If you have any questions, please let me know. I also have some more information for you all later, if, if you want some additional information.
I do have a question about the homeless population. Just curious, how does it get reported? Because it's kind of like graffiti, you know, if, it, it attracts more of it? And so, it's like if you, you know, see one thing going on, it's like, is there, is there like a, who should somebody call to say there's, looks like there's something to start, that's starting over here?
I mean, if it, and that depends too. If, if it's on our property, it's us. Really? We do not get a lot of reports or concerns that's, that's based on the homeless. We do patrol a lot and, and most of it's what we find because we're out there patrolling. Facilities sometimes will report if they're out doing things, they'll, they'll let us know, hey, we saw another encampment. And then if we go out, we'll, we'll maybe notify the, the PD. We have flood control, we have their cards, so we, we can get in contact with them. Again, it, it really goes in waves. We'll go push them off our campus, they'll go somewhere else and then they'll come back. And, and the, the city, the county, they're all in the same boat. They just, they're, they're struggling with resources to, to deal with it. Any other questions about, so, all right, move along. Crime prevention. So, our department really focuses on crime prevention. It takes a lot of effort. And in the long run, it is extremely beneficial. We, we put on, the biggest thing we do for crime prevention is patrol. We have our people out there all the time, walking around, driving around. And I know we only have one officer, but being visible is the biggest deterrent you can have. If, if you take the numbers and look at like Kennedy Park compared to us, we're extremely on the low side because we're present. So, I, we push that, like I say, on all of our officers to be out there, be visible and, and deter crime that way. We also present a lot of classes on campus. They're, they're free to student, staff and a lot of the public attend them as well. The, the more word we can get out there to prevent crime, the better. So, we do a women's self-defense class, we do about two, two a semester for that. Pepper spray class, we do that as well. We usually do one a semester, we just upped that to two because our last one was pretty full. And the, the third one there is armed intruder and behaviors of concern. So, we did offer a couple of those. We did a separate one for students and our, our staff and, and faculty on campus. But we found out the students are actually being trained already in their high schools. And so, they know the drill, they know what's going on. So, that's a good thing for us. They know what's, what's going on there. Crime prevention through environmental design, you'll hear that, SEP TED, we work on that a lot. And again, that's, that's collaboration with, with facilities and, and IT. Constantly sending in work orders, hey, this needs to be trimmed up and trimmed back for visibility, the lighting. I, I know Bob mentioned that earlier. And I, I have talked to the director of facilities to do a little more training with our custodial staff and our groundskeepers to, to let them know, hey, this is why you're doing this. You know, it's not just go replace this light bulb. This has a bigger impact on, on crime prevention. So, so we're hoping to, to get that the, next year as well. Technology. We try to encompass it all. Right now, we have dress buttons, so they're on all of our desktop computers on campus. So, if there's a concern, classified staff or some of our student workers, they just click on that and it notifies us. We get that notification on our cellphones and also our computers and we can respond to the area. It also comes up with the phone number. So, as we're responding, our dispatcher calls and it's like, hey, everything go, you know, okay, what's going on? And so, our staff really seem to like that. We, we get a lot, the majority, thank goodness, are accidents. So, but it's always good to test our response for that. And then we have the NBC Safe app for students. This has a lot of resources. And if, if you all don't have it on your phones, I have little cards I can pass out and, and you guys can put it on there. There's a bunch of things for that, that we have on there. Tons of emergency resources. There's contact phone numbers, anonymous reporting, so see something, say something, they can report things to us. They can text back and forth with our dispatcher as well. There's a friend walk. So, you actually send your, your information to your friend and they can track you as you're walking to your car. So, it's a great, great resource for our students and we do have some, some very positive reactions to it and comments to that. Another thing we have is our NBC Communicate. That's our mass notification system. So, when anyone enrolls in the college, they're automatically, their emails are enrolled in that, so they will get the notification. We also push out if people want to get the text messages. We have little cards when we go to presentations, hey, enroll in these and you can get more, more safety notifications. Bob talked briefly about our cameras. These have been a huge help to us and we just completed our first wave. So, all of, we have our, our key areas now, we have cameras in these, these spots. We've solved three cases so far in the past couple of months because of these cameras, so they are a benefit to us. We have two more waves we want to roll out. Our second one right now, we just kind of walked through and, and picked the areas that we think will be beneficial. A lot of them will be exterior. So, it'll give us the ability to monitor the camera's exterior. One thing to note, we do not have the manpower, so these aren't constantly monitored. It's great for us, if we get a call, we can look up there and see, oh, this is what's going on, if we're in the office, but most of the time we're not. So, a lot of it is follow-up. So, it's after. A crime was committed, okay, let's go back, let's look at the video footage and, oh, there we go, that's what happened. So, maybe down the road, we'll, we'll get the, there's an app where we can actually view them on our cellphones and that'll be beneficial as well. So, we'll continue to, to keep getting those up around campus. I mentioned earlier, we do a lot of threat assessment here. And currently, it's just the police that do it. I did a presentation a couple of months ago about the care team that's going to be up and running. I'm really excited about that in January. So, what that is, is a team that not only does threat assessment, but care. So, it's, it's taking people that, that may be dealing with a student discipline or other issues on campus and, and reaching out to them and saying, hey, what do you need from us to help you? And it can be all different, different areas. And this team is made up of five different people from various areas on campus. Bob is, is actually on the team, I recruited him. So, being able to have people with, with different backgrounds to contribute to threat assessment is, is huge. A lot of campuses have done this around the country. You'll hear them as care teams or bit teams and, and that. So, we'll be up and running. I have some more information, if you all would like that later, that I passed out a couple of months to the board. So, so please track me down and, and I'll get you that information. One thing that we have been missing, so we have the dress buttons on the computers for our staff. We have the NBC Safe app for our students, but we don't have anything for our faculty in the classrooms. And so, we've been really trying to look as what, how can we help our faculty while they're in their classrooms? And our, our couple of faculty members have, have seen me present this app, but this app is a safety app specifically for them. So, they'll have them on their cellphone. And as you can see there, if something happens in their class, they click the app and they can, they can click on that, that button, you know, is it, what's going on? Is it a medical emergency? Is, you know, are they having an issue with one of their students? That notifies us. And the cool thing about this app is, when it pops up on my phone, I can bring up a map and it'll, it'll dot right exactly where they are in that classroom. So, it's not the, the GPS from your cellphone, it's actual sensors in the classroom. So, if we do have an armed intruder or something on campus, they, hopefully the faculty would be able to click and we get all these notifications. Everything's fine in this classroom, everything's fine in this classroom. Oh, this one, there's something going on, there's injured students. And I can also, from the app, text back and forth with that faculty member. So, it's a pretty cool technology. It's been rolled out in a few elementary schools, a couple of high schools, but never on a college level. So, we would be the first for that. So, we're working right now with them and, and with the faculty to kind of finish that app up. So, I'm very excited about that, to kind of complete. So I'm very excited about that, to kind of complete our, our phase of, of that. Again, the cameras, we talked a little bit about that, rolling out the, the phase two, so we'll continue going. Emergency operations. As you can see, we have some lovely pictures up there. That was one of the, um, um, sorry. Hold on one second. It was a large tabletop exercise we did with our emergency operations that was here in the boardroom. So I am very, very, very lucky that Chief Arnold has almost completely finished our emergency operations plan. So I have a few more things I need to finish up there. He is kind of the emergency operations expert, so I, I got to learn from him. We do need to do continued training. I know with the board members, I will, I will be doing some training with you all, and with other members around campus. So the emergency training never stops, we will just continue to do that. Hopefully, we'll do some more exercises on a broader level. And then the next thing I need to do is update our emergency posters around campus. So we have emergency posters in all classrooms, we need to get them up in all the conference rooms, et cetera. So yeah, that's, that's all I have. I know I covered a lot of information quickly, so please, if there's any questions, or you can track me down later, and I'd be happy to, to answer anything.
Amber, great job, and congratulations again. I'm looking forward to changing their command on Saturday. If the board doesn't mind, I believe Marty had a question before we got started.
Oh, I would just.
Did you get it?
I'm, I'm kind of like a pitch electrician right now.
Marty's been doing a lot of lighting for us.
Marty really has, you know, Marty.
You know, getting some closer to Jay like.
Marty's our HVAC person, but in the absence of our electrician, he's been filling in and has, and has been doing some amazing things to improve lighting on campus.
Thanks for stepping up, Marty. Any, uh, any questions, comments from the board? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving along to, this is Information Discussion Item 12.4. This is our first reading of Board Policies. This is going to be presented by Catherine Kittle. I did have a speaker card on this. Gary, did you want to present before or after?
After.
Okay. All yours, Catherine.
I just wanted to do a very brief review where, for the new trustees, we're currently renewing and updating our board policy manual. Previous board has directed us to use the templates provided by the CCLC Policy and Procedure Service, so we're keeping as close to those as possible. And the policies you'll see come before you tonight is the first in, in, in what I hope is going to be a big wave. And they have been reviewed by campus committees, they've been working very hard all, all of fall. And these have also been reviewed by constituent groups bef- before coming to you for consideration. And this is the first reading, and they'll come back next month in a second reading for approval, I mean, for adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we are jumping to 13 Consent Calendar, right? Am I jo- I'm sorry, I'm bouncing between two. We just did 12.4, First Reading, Board Policies. Do you, do, uh, we can go through them. Do we have any?
Well, what, did, does anybody have any questions? I mean, did everybody, I looked at all of these, and it seems like we've just added required, you know, clauses. So rather than going through each one, I wonder if people have questions about any of them that we could address directly.
I have a question, a question about one of them.
Which?
The 3605. I was just curious.
Use your mic.
I'm sorry. I was curious about if you could give a, well, there are some examples of, in the policy of like what types of promotional items, but I was just wondering like when and how they would be used, and also if there would be any kind of reporting on either, either annual or some sort of basis like as to what, how much it was used, what kind of, what value was attached to those items, and just so we are able to track it.
Mm-hmm. I think Carol Lee had some pieces that she can present, and I think Bob and I talked about it, and we can kind of walk you through. Again, this is, you're, you're looking at policy level here, and not the attending APs, right? So.
Do you want to go first, Bob, or I can just?
Yeah, please, right?
Um, this is an, an effort to be more transparent in our use of generally commercially available products that the college produces as a result of instructional programs. So we have musical and theatrical performances and tickets, we produce wine, we have a culinary program that has food, and those are all really useful tools in creating visibility for the college. So to go along with this policy will be request forms and procedures for how to request it, what qualifies as a, a use, how are you justifying its benefit to the institution or the program, or even an individual class? So Gary did send me some questions.
Well, I think, but before we do that, let's, let's complete the staff piece, right? And then Gary, you would have that. A, a couple of other things we had, we talked about, and maybe Bob, you take a slice at it, and I can as well.
Sure. So as, as Carol Lee mentions, there are things that are unique to Napa Valley College that result in the creation of personal property that could be used to promote the college, advertise the college. And so this policy is an effort to put in place a policy that controls or, or puts a review in place for the use of those products for those promotional activities.
Yeah, and I, and I would say, and this is a very broad general policy, and so really what we're asking the board to do is to address the reality that when we're asked, as part of the Ventners Association, we're asked for wine all the time, right? To donate something. This allows a, a much more transparent process right now. Like most wineries up and down the valley, they're asked for wine every day, every single day. And they have a process that, you know, that undergirds that. For us, it's, you know, does this, this will, this will show up in the AR, right, the AP? And that AP will work its way through that, which is the regulation that's underlying this. That's not me doing it or you doing it, that's a very long shared governance piece. It will work its way through the Council of Presidents, it will go out to constituents for their input, so everyone's kind of clear. You know, can, and we talked about this today a little bit, when is it okay to call Redwood Middle School and allow those children to come over to view a matinee when we're selling tickets? You know, right now, that's a gift of public. We all recognize that it's not, it's a good thing to do, but we need to be more clear and transparent. So that's really what it's about. At the, the, this piece really defines for you, for us all, you're directing me to ensure that there are underlying APs that are very specific, that will come back to you too, but that's going to take a while to work its way through the, the process as well. I don't know if that generally helps, yeah.
And there is some tie with the Vitacultures Foundation's Marketing and Sales Plan, which calls for promotional tasting events, which is essentially giving away wine. So same sort of activity.
That is a good point. We, you know, we, we got very high marks, I think 90 and maybe more on our wines. We have to give those away to the people who taste them, right? But they're for sale, so there you go. So we, we have to create a way that's more transparent and allows us to do those kinds of things.
So when you refer to the transparency part of it, are we, are we looking at having a regular, even just like an annual note and file kind of report that shows like a dollar amount, that, like, so when we do a free matinee for Redwood Middle School, will there be a dollar amount assigned to, to, to doing that? And, and that we can, that pat ourselves on the back for?
Sure. It, it could certainly end up as piece, a piece of the, I think of the AP, and Bob would probably.
Certainly, and what I'll, uh, uh, the comment that I would make is that when we give those tickets to Redwood Middle School, we are issuing those tickets through our ticketing system, which is recording the value of those tickets. When wine is distributed, trust me, when wine is distributed by the VWT program, they are tracking the value of the inventory that is going out for those promotional items. So that information is currently being gathered.
Trustee Goff?
I just had a question. I understand the administrative procedures and, and tracking. I'm, I'm wondering, is the BP the place where we should include some sort of guidelines as to when these promotional items are given or how they're given, or, I mean, just to protect the president in his decision-making, or, or the board to say, this is the purpose, and this is when it's appropriate, and this is when it's not to be used? That kind of thing? Is, is it appropriate to put it in here?
So those, that information is in draft form. Part of the instructions for how to fill out your request form. How to write your justification.
But it does, just to be clear, that does not find its way in the policy, that finds its way in the AP.
That was my question. So that, that's absolutely administrative procedure.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So taking note, again, it is a first read, are there any changes proposed? Any other additional comments?
Well, in response to Gary's question, one of them, we did want to revise the document to reflect that we're talking about products produced as a result of the college's instructional programs that are generally commercial in nature.
Sounds like you stole a thunder there, I'm not sure.
He's had other thunder, I'm sure.
I think he still wants to talk, though.
My name is Gary Orton, I live in Napa. Thank you very much for discussing it. As you know, I sent each of you a memo when I looked at this, and I had several questions. You've answered some of them, and I, I sort of guessed what they were, would have been helpful maybe to have a little background as to why you needed it. I noticed this is all in red, and normally you put things in red if it's legally required. I'm not sure if it's legally required, it's a good idea, it might be legally required.
The answer to that is it's just, it's new, so that's why it's in red.
Okay, got it. And, and you raised some interesting questions, I hadn't, didn't know exactly what you were going to say about, you know, for example, elementary school children getting in. I'm not sure that's property, for example. And you might want to make some distinctions on each, each of these things, because you might have a different tiered system of allowing an entrance. An entrance into a production, I don't think is property. We're talking about personal property, and for those, because some may not know, I know it's, you know, the lawyers know what personal property is, and they know what real property is. If it's real property, it's land and thing that's attached to it, personal property or objects that aren't attached, okay? But I'm not sure, I, I take it could be, because, you know, I know that, I don't know if they actually got any tickets, but certainly it was in discussions with the Festival of Napa Valley that you were going to get some tickets from their production. Now that might be a piece of personal property. I mean, there are distinctions. But let me just go on, those, those are in sort of response to some of the comments I heard. I still have some concerns in the way, this is, this, even in draft form, this could be a lot better. There's no definition for what is meant by promotional property in this policy. It's a, it's a fairly broad term. Promotional policy, even though you have some citations to the Education Code, promotional property is not used, or promotional use of property is nothing that's discussed in the Education Code. I did a word search, it's not in there, it's not a, it's like kind of a new term. So if you're using a term that's not commonly used, or it could have different definitions, it's probably a good idea to define what you're talking about as promotional property. And as I just mentioned, you could have different categories of the way you treat, you know, different types of personal property. So you might want to be thinking about that, and I think you're already starting in this process to, to think about, there are different types of promotional property. You know, the California Constitution prohibits gifts of public funds or public property unless there's a specific and justifiable purpose, public, public purpose for doing so. So the board needs to, I think, identify those categories of gifts that would justifiably serve a public interest. And certainly, giving, even if it were a piece of personal property, a ticket to an elementary student to see a, a production, a live production, is certainly a public purpose. That's a category that could be spelled out. Giving a bottle of wine, or giving a case of wine, I have difficulty with. You know, there's a big, big leap there. Or if you wanted to give away a bunch of used computers, you're talking about a different category. As a matter of fact, there's no limitation in this as to the amount. Certainly, a taste of wine is a lot different than a case of wine. You could put a dollar value on that, you could do it all sorts of ways, you might want to be thinking about that. I don't think that is a question of implementation, I think that's basic policy that you ought to be thinking about, you know? What, are you going to feel comfortable about, you know, a case of wine? Two cases, three, four? I don't know. And, and I think you can also make a distinction between wine that is used to sell your wine, if you need to have somebody, you know, bid on 1,500 cases of wine, yeah, you're going to probably want to give them a taste, but I don't think that's a gift. That, that's a, for a purpose of selling, direct purpose of selling the wine. There's a distinction there. So, and that's part of the reason you probably need to give a definition of what you mean by promotional, and it's not giving away property. So my, my suggestion, I would support you maybe taking this back to committee even before you do a first reading and have another go at it. I'm not sure, an attorney has looked at this? An attorney that wants to really start digging in to see, and ask the first question is, why do you want this policy? And then you get to write it. After, an attorney sits down and says, oh, okay, we can do that. And there are distinctions. I, I, to me, this was, you know, if somebody were to pick this up, could you, could you tell me what this is about, please? You can't, you can't read it, I mean, you can't understand it, what it is, until you get an explanation. A policy shouldn't do that. Policies should, you know, most people should be able to pick up a policy and say what this is about. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. Is staff, I mean, what's the direction? So.
I have a question, just one more question. I'm wondering about the grapes, how that entered into this? So I'm wondering where grapes would be given away for promotional purposes, that's a question. And then just a brief comment to respond to what trustee Goff said, I, I think it's totally appropriate for the board to set some parameters from which the president can implement the policy.
Well, again, I'll, I'll say real fast, you know, that the, the attending AR AP underneath this will be, you know, very developed, you know? So what, you know, what, really what this policy doing is directing the president to work through the shared governance process to, to develop this AP. So I think your, your points are well taken, we'll address all those pieces. This is, it's a very broad piece, good first read. As, as we looked up and down the system, remarkably, very few colleges, community colleges are using this, they should be. This pin would qualify as a promotional use of district property, and people just don't address it. So there, there are a lot of, a lot of pieces here that we really, really should talk about. They'll come out, I like the matrix idea, I think that, that's probably natural. We have talked about the wine specifically and grapes in the foundation, deep conversations in there. And now, who's representing the Vitaculture Foundation?
Rosario.
So Rosario will be on there and can bring that back as well. But I appreciate the comments, I've got a lot of, a lot of notes here, thank you.
Can I make one last comment?
I think, I think the, I mean, I think.
I just respectfully disagree. If, if there's no hard push, maybe you ought to be developing an AR, because that begins to bring out the questions, and then you can align your policy with the, the basic overall ideas of what this is about. But this is so broad and vague, it's almost, it's very difficult to get a head around what this is. And you, it would be, make it a lot easier to write a good policy if you had more of the details of what you're after. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. What the consensus is, or?
I was just going to, really quickly, when, as you're developing the AP, could we have a good definition of what promotional means?
could we have a good definition of what promotional means as be a part of that document?
Sure, sure, yeah.
All good questions and comments. I'm going to move us along here to consent calendar thirteen point one. Approval of consent calendar, with the exception of thirteen point three, which we polled. Are we good? Consent calendar passes, right? I'll have to make a motion on that one. So moving on to thirteen point two, curriculum changes. Nope, nope, sorry. Sorry, sorry. We're here.
Mm-hmm.
Moving into, bouncing between fourteen action items, right?
Yes.
And I do have a comment card on this one. Let's see here. Fourteen point one, would you like to comment after or before the presentation? Shelley? So this is Mr. Bob Parker.
And so there's no formal presentation here, which you have in your board packet. The agenda item itself describes the process that we went through to find the Scion Group as the company that we are recommending to conduct the campus housing feasibility study for us. You know, we've, we have been talking about campus housing as a board for, you have been talking about campus housing as a board for a while. It was suggested that the feasibility study be conducted first. And so that's what we are proposing to do here. We had a group of four staff members, myself included, who interviewed the respondents to the RFP. We had six companies. All members of the group agreed that the Scion Group was the best qualified candidate to provide the information that we're looking for to help us make the determination as to whether campus housing is viable for us, what the desire is from both our students and our faculty and staff. And when they say that they desire housing, what does that mean? And so what type of housing would they be looking for? And probably most importantly, what would affordable mean to them? Because the one thing that the Scion Group most impressed us with as our review of the candidates was their ability to do their, at the end of the process, to really look at the cost of developing any housing, what it would look like and what, how it would pencil out. How would it, how could we or would we be able to accomplish what would be considered affordable housing based on our students' desires, based on the current market here in Napa Valley? Comparing the housing prices that are currently available to what we could offer based on the number of units that we believe we could reasonably fill and the price per unit in that housing that students and/or faculty and staff would be interested in paying. And so we're recommending that we, you approve the entering into a contract with the Scion Group. If you approve that tonight, they would begin working in January, conducting focus groups, doing surveys, meeting with our students, meeting with our faculty and staff. There would be a number of visits to campus to gather information and then they'd come back with their final recommendations. And they expect to accomplish that over a three-month period.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. I do have a comment card. I'm sure I have questions from, comments from the board. Before I have a public comment?
No, you can do the public comment first.
I think before we vote, I'm going to have a public comment on it, just as we go forward. So Shelley, I am going to hold you to the five minutes, though, that we allot.
I won't even have to worry about that.
Thank you.
You know, as I was just listening now, maybe I'm just naive. I don't know that much about it. But I'm really glad that you are looking at going to Scion because I guess you've been talking for a long time whether or not you should or shouldn't do this. But I was thinking, did anybody ask the students or ask the faculty or ask the police department? You know, has anybody even just tried that, just to see? Because maybe everybody'd say, well, I don't care. I don't want to live on campus. I don't know. But I am glad that at least you're going to look at it and Scion's going to identify the need. I guess that's what we'll do, is pay them to do it. That's okay. I also know that you're going to update the educational master plan this spring, that had been talked about before. So if what this, if the study supports that we want student housing, then I hope the board will insist that that gets put or tied into one of the goals of the educational master plan. So that way, the faculty can have an opportunity to discuss whether or not they think it's a good idea. And, you know, they can give their ten cents. So that was mainly what I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley.
Move approval?
Second.
I have a motion for approval by trustee Baldini and a second by trustee Rios. Any questions, comments from the board? Trustee Baker?
First, I just wanted to kind of clarify if this is a feasibility study in terms of like, is it feasibly, feasible in terms of market or is this more of a needs assessment? Because it sounds like, from the description, that it's more of a needs assessment. And so I just wanted to clarify that.
Sure, and it's actually all of the above. So it really is looking at the needs in, for our students and also for our faculty and staff. But it's also looking at, okay, we, because we have spoken to our students and our students have said, yes, we'd be interested in housing. And that's great. But what does that mean? You know, are you looking for dormitories? We've indicated we're not really interested in building dormitories because then you've got to provide a lot of other services along with that. Would you be interested in a two or three-bedroom unit that you would share with a few other people? What does housing mean to you? And then when we say affordable, what is affordable for you? Then, taking all of that information, it's saying, we've determined, and this is what Scion would do for us, we've determined that you could reasonably support up to three hundred or more units of housing for your students. So what would it cost based on current building trends and other historical data that's available to them? What would it cost to build that many units? And then, based on what your students are interested in paying, can you really support the ongoing? Can that really support the ongoing operations of that? So it really is many phases to it and it really does encompass all of those things.
You kind of answered one of my other questions just in answering that, so thank you. But just to clarify, would they be looking at some of the other things that we've been discussing? Like in terms of how this would be financed or how it would be run? Would they be, is that going to be part of this contract as well or that they're just looking at whether or not housing is a good idea?
So when they look at pricing out or costing out to see if it really does pencil out, they would be making recommendations on potential financing for it. But just to be clear, what we are engaging them to do is that feasibility study to come back to us with a recommendation. We would not be, first of all, they aren't a contractor. So they don't build housing. They do have an arm that operates housing, but we are not looking to them for that. We are specifically looking to them for recommendations on the level of demand and our ability to support that level of demand.
And then my final question is also kind of what sorts of variables are we anticipating getting back from them? Because one of the things that we discussed as a board previously is that we really wanted to focus on students. But there's also been discussion numerous times about, you know, faculty or staff. So are we anticipating that they might come back and say, well, if you're only looking at students, there's no way that this could work? But if you were to do, we've also had, you know, ten percent of the staff that said that they would be interested, but that way it looked different. So are we anticipating something like that in the product or at least in the process?
We actually are anticipating that as part of the process, yes.
Good questions. Trustee Baker, any other questions?
Yes, I have a question on the other students as identified. I mean, the next item is homeless students. Would that negate that or how would that be looked at? Or would they be considered as far as that other students has identified? As well as the end date where the program either graduated or did not, like the twenty-two weeks, police academy or psych tech or other career technical education that have an end date that might be a good.
So as part of their focus groups and part of their surveys, they will be speaking to all areas of our campus population. So they would be including our academies. They would be, you know, to the extent that that our homeless students identify that way, they would be including them in those focus groups and surveys as well.
I would add, Michael, that I'm going to take a stab at it. I think it's SB twelve twenty-seven. I'm taking a shot. You can check. But basically, it's an extension of to the homeless student population for vouchers. And they weren't included in the previous pieces. So now student housing would be available, one of those avenues where they could apply for vouchers and, you know, use some of that, those pieces. So it's a, it's a nice boon for them as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions, comments? There's a motion and a second on the floor. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 No abstentions or nays. It passes unanimously. The board, district and community anxiously awaits the results. Thank you. Moving on to fourteen point two, second reading board policies. This is BP forty thirty and BP fifty-two twenty. This is a second reading. Any questions, comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Motion has been made by trustee Baker and second by trustee Segarra. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
No abstentions, no nays. Passes unanimously. Thank you. So now we are at board reports. Fifteen point one, standing committee and other appointment reports. So I'm going to bounce to this one. Do we have a report from DAS? That was still you, trustee Segarra?
We met on Tuesday. And we are going to go into contract with a new, a new vendor which has offered a better deal than what we have, newer, newer machines for our students to eat more healthy and drink water instead of sodas. And it's more, it makes us more money than what we currently have. We went through some of the cafe finances. It's making money. A master agreement is still under review. It seems that DAS is growing. And so more legal language needs to be incorporated into, into what it has to cover all the growth, especially with, you know, the Silverados and their continuance and playing in our fields and with that partnership and how all that's going to work out. All right, also with the truck. The scholar eats, also that's still, we're trying to put that into the equation as to how that partnership is really going to work out and, you know, be beneficial to the district as opposed to just the culinary program. And, you know, of course, all those things, keeping the books straight requires more people. So more employees and that's another growth that DAS is seeing. So that has some fiscal implications as to, you know, what we can do and whatnot. So, Mr. De Haro presented the project, the first hopefully annual mariachi festival that it's scheduled to happen in March. And it's very exciting because, would you like to explain a little bit about it or?
Yeah, what we have is that it's sort of a, it's a brainstorm. It's a vision that I've had for about two years now. And basically, what it entails is that we will be bringing three, three levels of education by mariachi music. For example, the high school group is a high school from Wenatchee, which is in the state of Washington, that has received many, many awards. And this is, this is an area where it's primarily farm workers. And so most of the kids in this group are parents, are children of farm workers. And they've used the mariachi, the academic piece of mariachi, to advance themselves and to launch themselves into college and higher education. The, the community college level group is a group, actually, it's a college, South Western College, which is Chula Vista, also a college where Dr. Kraft once worked. And this group in particular is very, very well-known internationally. They've played in China, in Russia. They've played in several parts of the world. And they will be here again to demonstrate their skill set. And again, this is a group of students. But the professor, Dr. Jeff Nevin, is someone who is recognized worldwide. And then the third group, which is the university level group, is the mariachi group that's at Cal Berkeley. And they, they have a group that they've, that they've had for many, many years. And again, they will be here to present for your college level. This afternoon, I was sent a list of the students. There's fourteen students from Cal Berkeley who'll be playing. It's a multi-ethnic group, but the majors of these students are heavily STEM majors. So they're studying astrophysics. They're studying all sorts of, you know, STEM field like chemistries and all sorts of things. So the idea, again, it's not so much an entertainment. It's more of an academic mix in with a cultural aspect of what youth can do in this music field. So there's more information. In fact, thanks to the Office of Initiative Development, Carol Lee, her staff. Very soon, you'll be seeing a website with all the information. And together with this event, since we broached it here, is that it'll be on March the sixteenth. The concert itself is going to be at seven PM in the gymnasium. But the nice piece of this is that we've incorporated for that morning and afternoon workshops. Workshops for those youth that are in our school districts who are currently playing those instruments related to mariachi music, the violin, the trumpet, the guitarone, and there's about four or five instruments. So they will be invited to participate in these workshops performed, or conducted by professional instructors with the idea that they too can learn and transfer their music skills from their jazz classes or band classes to mariachi. So it's a new, it's a thing that's really taken up a lot of popularity. One thing about South Western College, that, South Western College is the first college in the world to offer a degree in mariachi. And now currently, there's other colleges and for your schools that offer a degree in this music. So we're very hopeful that this will come off well. We're raising money for it. And so if you have any extra change in your pockets, it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
So you see, it's not, it's not only a folk festival. It's an educational and, you know, musicians do make better students. And so when those students are driven to pass these RJS tests in music and reading notes and what have you. So, so I really like the educational component of that whole festival. And so that's my report.
Thank you, trustee Segarra. Vitaculture and Winery Foundation, trustee Baldini.
Yes, good evening. Do we have any minutes there? Well, we don't have any approved minutes, so I'll just go through the. Well, we, we don't have any approved minutes, so I'll just go through the, the meeting. We reviewed a NBC site plan with areas that were licensed areas that were presently available to serve, serve wine. Went through the financial reports and Mr. Parker gave us some very good numbers. The, and then we heard from Bill Hardy of the, of the Napa Valley College Foundation regarding the Wine Education Center Capital Campaign, which is, which is very exciting about a brand-new building on campus and then rehab of the Trefethan Classroom as well as the, the Ag Lab. And our next meeting is in February, February 15th, I believe. Oh, excuse me. No, stand by. That'll be, hasn't been set yet, Rosar.
I think it's Valentine's Day, Michael.
Valentine, yes, I think it is, yes. Could be that Monday, but. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Baldini. Legislative, no report, I see. Audit and Finance Committee, they did not meet, right? And Rural Property, there's no report, I believe, right? No. McPherson, no report. So moving on to Item 15.2, Future Agenda Item Request. We've had obviously some changes, so I'm just gonna propose that we maybe wipe the current proposals for agenda requests clean and start new. I think if that's possible to do that. I mean, Catherine can pull it up, right?
Yeah, we'd have to. Those, those that were done as a board, we, we still need to honor those as a board. So they're still on there. Now, if the board doesn't have a, an interest in moving forward on that, but I think most of them are completed or underway. And I'm not sure that those are all showing. Where, we're certainly going after housing policy continuing. Review of legal services is, is a standard item that is, is a part of what we're gonna work on as well. Community Cultural Center, I wasn't quite sure, but it's, it's, you know, we can, we can review these as you get there. Cannabis policy, really, oh, he left, Ken left. We'll, we'll come back at, at this. We have a existing drug policy that covers that cannabis policy, so I was hoping they might have presented that piece tonight. And smoking, yeah.
So put these on there and making, I mean, I'd like to hear from our new trustees and possible future agenda requests at this point?
Not at this point.
I was hoping to focus on associated students. I've talked and spoken with a few of members of the student body there and I think, I'm not sure how much discussion I can have on this, but, so let me know if I'm going out of bounds here, but really looking at, you've just gone on the website and looked at associated students at the website and spoke with members and there's lots of positions open. And just curious, you know, why, why is that? And so I would hope maybe we could come together as a board and discuss ways that we can better support associated students. I think whether that's financially or administratively, you know, who knows? But I think that would be a really important topic. I think ways that we can foster and improve in associated students and foster more leadership. The people on, the kids, I shouldn't call them students, on associated students that I've met have been incredibly, I've just, no way that I was that mature at that age. For people that I'm talking with, I'm just being, so how can we find more of these people? Because I know that they're here.
Probably put something together on that, right?
Yeah, is there, we are good with that? So being an information item on ASM NBC and we can, we can address a whole.
And so would that be followed, I guess, if we have an information item, further discussion for in terms of policies and roles and whatnot to impact?
We would certainly include any policies that are there and, and if there's implications that the board would have during that information item that would lead to an action item, that would be a, a follow-up of that initial piece.
Thank you.
Any other ones from?
We just did that, yeah.
Pretty nice to have an update, though, as we go through the different phases of this increased security that Amber alluded to as they, they're accomplished.
Are you feeling good about this one, Michael, that what we did tonight?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay. So we'll put completed on that one as well.
Okay.
Photograph.
All right. Everybody good there? All right. So let's move to trustee and board chair reports. Let's start with our new trustee over here, Trustee Dodd. Do you have a trustee report?
Wonderful first meeting.
Thank you. Trustee Rios, we'll just go down that way.
I attended the lunch at the Upper Valley Campus with some of you. I think that was the only, only college activity I was able to attend. I was actually very sorry I missed the art show because I really wanted to go to that and I ended up down here in Napa very early in the morning for a court matter and, but I, so I couldn't stay all day or come back. So I'm sorry I missed that.
Trustee Goff?
I just wanted to thank Catherine and Kathy and all those in HR that have taken such good care of me and made me feel welcome here. I really appreciate it. It's quite intimidating to join a Board of Trustees at the college level. And I just want to let you know that all of your work to help me get started is really greatly appreciated. So I want to thank everybody for helping me out.
Thank you. Trustee Segura?
The only thing I did was the luncheon. It was a wonderful lunch. But it, it looks like as the member, a new member of the VWT, I'm gonna be doing some research in Sicily. We're gonna visit some wineries and vineyards, so I'll let you know how that goes.
Will be your guinea pigs for any tastings. Trustee Baldini?
Oh, we're not going to order. All right, okay. I'm also, trustee?
Usefa?
Usefa.
Did he give you a report?
By design, yes.
Oh.
Yes. Thank you. Board Report. Dear Board Members, I apologize for not being here in person to report. This is the moment where being a student and trustee is so hard to juggle, especially during finals week. As a note, he has a final tomorrow in chemistry. Before I start my report, I wish the best of luck to both departing trustees for their future and want to welcome the two new trustees, trustee Goff and trustee Dodd. And to returning trustees, trustee Baldini and trustee Irison, he actually said this, hoping we could work together as a team for student success. Going back to report on 12/7, I had a meeting with Benjamin Casada for revisions of some APs and BPs for the Office of Student Live. 12/6, we successfully completed wrapping up children's presents we received through our collaborated Angel Tree Event. 12/5, meeting with Dr. Ronald Kraft. 11/19, attended the EIC Equity and Inclusivity Committee Meeting. 11/13, meeting with ASNVC, Associated Students of Napa Valley College Advisor. 11/9, attended SS Trio 4.0 GPA Celebration Event as student trustee and recipient. Clap here. That ends my report. Happy holidays. So I'll start my report, happy holidays, and welcome the new trustees and, and I've, I've welcomed, in my tenure, I've welcomed 13 and said goodbye to 15. So it's goodbye Amy and goodbye Mary Ann, have a pleasant journey. The, I was one of those that my colleague Rafael Rios referred to as some of you, attended the Upper Valley Campus Luncheon. It was outstanding by the, a little smaller class, but the food was outstanding. The, I was also able to attend the SSS Trio, the Trio Event and see our trustee be honored. So that was nice. And I was at the nurses' pinning ceremony today with, and that was, that was also as a fun celebration, but I couldn't stay for the lunch. And then let's see what else is going on. And Saturday, we have the Police Academy graduation at 10:00 AM sharp, followed by Amber's welcoming. And I believe that's my, that's all I have to say. Happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Baker?
I was just looking at my calendar. I'm very tired and very busy, but apparently not much with the college. I was also able to go to the lunch and was actually pleased to get the, eat the whole thing, got to stay for dessert, didn't have to rush out. And yeah, it's, I finished the leadership program. I have my pen, which is actually a magnet and so it won't, it keeps sliding, but anyway. So, and unfortunately, because of Nutcracker Parent Duties, I won't make it on Saturday, but I will be there in spirit.
Thank you, trustee Baker. I just want to urge everyone, if they can come on Saturday, to attend. Starts at 10:00 for our new police chief, Amber Wade. And I wanna?
That one starts at?
10 to 12, though, right?
Yeah, no. 10 to 12 is the Police Academy grad and then 12 in this room is the change of command.
Both good events. If you haven't been to one, I would urge going to both. I also want to welcome trustee Goff and trustee Dodd. Congratulations. Also, thank all of you guys for your vote of confidence. It's a little different sitting in this seat. And, yeah, well, disappeared. And my goal is to run focused, productive board meetings, keep us on time. And I want us to all work together and be open, build trust, and I'm looking forward to a good year. That's my report. Thank you, you guys. Well, also, I'm open on the committees so far. I know we've got them, but if there's anything, I mean, I'm willing to work with you guys if you want to attend them to get in. And I also wanted to remember Doug Ernst and I wanted to take a moment of silence and then close our meeting in his honor. So a moment of silence, please. Thank you, guys. I'm gonna close the meeting at 8:35. Meeting is adjourned. And future meetings is, our next meeting will be January 17th. Up for the special one? Okay.
I really, really did.
The goal?
Yeah, I really, really did, but my, my next.